Welcome to our December 2018 Board of Trustees Workshop. Thank you all for being here. We're going to try to not use the microphone that's in the center of the table, so if you all can hear me, is this good? Is it okay? Perfect. Thank you for being here today. We'll start with standing for the invocation and political.
If we can bow our heads. Dear Lord, thank you for gathering us all here this morning for the betterment of our students, for the betterment of our college, for the betterment of our community. During this special season where some of us celebrate Hanukkah, some Christmas, and some other celebrations throughout the year, we give thanks to you each and every day and worship you and gather together to serve your good in our community. Bless us this day as we serve the college and fill us with good ideas and wonderful opportunities, and thank you. Amen.
Congratulations to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. We'll start this morning with just a couple comments from myself, and I'll open it up to the rest of the board as we welcome you all here and then to our President, Dr. Williams. I just want to thank you all again for being here. This is personally one of my favorite meetings of the year. What I hope this is for everyone is an opportunity to have a say, be open and transparent about what's going on at St. Petersburg College and get excited about where we hope to go in the next year, two years, and three years as well. I'm going to informally propose that at next year's workshop, we all dress down a little bit. I think that's going to help us get a little more casual and have a little more honest conversation as well. Plus, I could do without the suit and tie for one meeting. So, thank you all again for being here. And just a couple comments quickly before we get started. I had the opportunity to go to graduation on Saturday, as I'm sure a lot of you had as well. Fantastic day again. I just want to thank all the administrators and the staff and the faculty for the hard work and what they're doing to make sure that that is a special day for our students, to make sure that they truly feel the weight of the accomplishment that they have and that they're excited to move into the future, whatever that means for each of their lives. That always fills me with a lot of energy, and I'm sure it does for you all too. But it was another great day, and I was glad it was Tropicana Field, so we could limit that to one graduation ceremony and not two. In addition, I had the chance last week to go to one of the last or the last Model UN meetings of the year or of the semester, and I wanted to just, from the board, thank that group for the hard work that they've put in. They won some additional awards this past semester in Washington DC and then before that in Atlanta. It was a fun meeting to go to because they were passing out the actual certificates, awards, and some of the personal accomplishments that those students received. And I told them I would pass on the word from both the students and the faculty members that were there who worked so hard with these students to be successful in Model UN. They're very appreciative of the support that the board and that the college gives them to be able to do that at the community college level, at the state college level. And I'm sure all of you are aware, but they compete with the best of the best, and they're winning awards with the best of the best and oftentimes beating, I think this year, about eighty-seven percent of the universities that competed. So, it's quite an impressive group, and I heard from many of the students individually after the meeting, and they talked about the ability to speak in front of people now with confidence, the ability to debate and use factual information to give a rational argument about something, the ability to write position papers, all of these things that will help later in life. And it's really neat to see what great friends they've all become with each other, too. And that's not, that doesn't even count the experience they're getting traveling to these cities, seeing something new, and making connections with other students from other colleges and universities. So, it's a great program. We're thankful that they're as successful as they are, and they put the time and energy into it, and I hope that we can continue to support things like that. With that, I'll pass it over to any of the other trustees for any comments.
Just real quick, my favorite exercise at graduation is when Dr. Williams has the student body stand up, the graduates, and, you know, how many of you graduated with honors? How many of you are in extracurricular activities? How many of you have kids? How many of you are over the age of? How many of you worked during your time? And to see them stand up, I mean, that's why we're here. So, they can work, so they can raise a family, so they can have an opportunity for second, third chances, so young people can get an AA, a BA, and move into the workforce. That's what inspires me, so that's a really cool exercise. And then to see them walk the stage so excited and to get to shake their hands, it's up close and personal, but that's why, that's why we have a mission statement. So, thank you all.
Well, I am just totally excited about all of the work and effort that this team has done to not only support the students at SPC and represent the college very well, but also serve the community. And today, we get an opportunity to showboat a little bit and show you what this group has done and the differences that they have made for the institution and for our students, and then to also share our passion and vision of what we think we need to do going forward. And so, we have a slightly different format than what we've done in the past, and we definitely look forward to your input. I, too, was very proud of graduation, very proud of the team and all of you who came and spent time with the students. The minister who prayed, stopped me after graduation, said, "I have never, ever been in anything like this." And to see the pride of your students and the celebration that this stage and the faculty have given, it means a lot to them, but it means a lot to me. And he said, "When do I get to come back?" And it's not, it's not normal that people want to come and sit for a couple hours, but for him to say that, that was majorly huge. But we had a good time. I think we had a great time. We missed you guys, so hopefully we'll catch you in May. But thank you, and I'm ready for today.
Me, too. Ms. Bello, anything before we move on? Any comments?
Just excited to be here, and I don't know if everybody has seen this or not, but excited to share this with everyone because it's really cool.
They haven't seen all of it.
No, they haven't. I brought copies.
So, we need to give it to them electronically.
That, too. With that, we will begin our meetings, so I'd like to invite Ms. Andrea Henning to get us started.
Thank you, Chair Stonecifer. Good morning, Board of Trustee members, President Williams, college family. How's everybody doing today?
Good.
We have an action-packed day. It will be a very productive strategic planning workshop. I'm feeling it. And the key three agenda items are, we're going to start off with accomplishments. We want to look at what have we accomplished over the past six months? It's been significant. We're just going to scratch the surface, but we need to recognize great accomplishments. Secondly, action plans. This is the year of action, and so we're going to look at each of our five teams and the action plans that we've created, and we really need to lean in and hear from our board members. We're looking to you to give us strategic guidance moving forward so that we can propel into 2019. So, that's the second action items. And then the third, and the most riveting part of the morning, evaluations. They're going to review key criteria for President Williams and for our Board of Trustee members and have you kind of finalize the criteria on which you want to be, you wish to evaluate and be accountable. So, those are the three action items. Is that all right?
Yes.
All right. Before we launch into our accomplishments, we have set a solid foundation in our Strategic Impact Plan this past year. We've done a lot of work. We've laid a very solid foundation, which will help support the action plans that will be the focus of today. And so, I'd like to ask Dr. Sabrina Crawford if you would come forward and just share with us the key strategic plan initiatives.
Sure, absolutely. So, good morning, Dr. Williams, Chair Stonecifer, members of the board, all my friends in the room. I'm going to take two seconds just to brag. So, I flew in late last night from New Orleans where I was attending the, our SACs, COC, our accreditors' big annual event. It was an unusual event because SPC was invited to present on three different areas that had to do with either initiatives that supported our reaffirmation bid or actually hosting a site. So, we did how to host an onsite visit. We did how to assess non-academic units, and the whole entire Student Services side of the house, how they support guided pathways. And we got accolades from the entire attendees that were there, and each of the sessions were really well-attended, and it speaks highly to the fact of all the work, everyone is in this room, and all of the direction that we received from you here in this room on our December meeting. So, I just wanted to say thank you and kudos to everybody. The work that we're doing is spot-on and well above what other people are doing right now. So, I just wanted to start with that. I am here today to talk a little bit about our Strategic Impact Plan, and I wanted to kind of tie it together because, like many of us in the room, there are many moving parts to this plan. We have the mission and vision and core values that we worked on during our last year's strategic meeting in December. And then we have the foundation of everything that we do here at the college, which lays in our community of care, and those four values. So, when you look at the slide, either on your desk or up on the board, which is up there, those four key values that come from the community of care embed every single thing that we do here at the college. If it's not meeting one of those four things, then we definitely shouldn't be doing it. And then when we look at the three pillars that you identified for us, either academic excellence, economic mobility, or community engagement, and the main goals that we're trying to achieve, those are kind of what we hope to get to in three years. So, it's not an immediate this year, next year, or the third year. These are the big overarching goals and the three areas that we want to focus our time in. We want to be seen as having academic excellence. We want to make sure that our students are getting opportunities for economic mobility, and we want to really focus in on how we're engaging with our community. So, although there's strategic goals underneath those, how we're actually reaching those, and here's the kicker, we have five specific plans, and that's how we want to come to you in December and talk to you. What are we doing in each of these five different plans? And those are annual plans. What are we doing each year in order to move us one step closer to meeting the goals underneath each one of those pillars? So, the one difference between how we're doing strategic planning now to how we do strategic planning in the past is, in the past, we had one-year goals. Every year, we set new initiatives, and those initiatives are the ones that we actually measured. And then we came back to the December meeting, we set new initiatives. Now, we have three-year goals, and we have metrics that we're going to look at, the same metrics every year for three years. And we brought those forward to you last May, June, July. We kept bringing them back until they were finally finalized as part of our Strategic Impact Plan. Well, we are very pleased to say that these metrics are now public and visible and mobile-friendly on your phones, and we have them on our VI site. So, I have Dewan Fox here with me today. He's going to kind of highlight a little bit of what we are able to show you. Again, three-year goals, where we're headed, where we're hoping to get to, and where we are today as of the 17, 18 year. So, on our front page of our new VI site, we're using Power BI now to show these metrics in a very simple way of noticing how are we doing. So, it'll either be red, it'll be yellow, it'll be green. And these are our core metrics that have to do with the pillars, that have to do with those five plans. You'll see we have our overall success rates. These targets are all for 2021, and we looked at where we, where were we during '16, '17, and where are we, where were we now in '17, '18? So, when we come back next year, we'll share how we were doing this current year. So, you can see right now, according to our overall success rates, we're doing great. Our retention rate, so retention of students who are in the fall and they return the following fall, we're doing really well as well. We've had an increase. We look at, ooh, magic. We look at persistence. Persistence is how you, how students go from one term into the next term. Now, there's two sets of persistence data. There's the one that goes students who were in the fall, do they come back in the spring? And that's, that's our most important one. That's the one we tend to look at all the time. But it's just as important to say, who is here in the spring, and did they then come back in the fall? So, we have another one that has our spring-to-fall data. So, you'll see we're doing really well on that. Our new student enrollment, so this is a new student enrollment minus all of our dual-enrollment students. We're trying, as one of our major initiatives, when we're looking for recruitment, we have new student enrollment going, this is, obviously, you can see this is down, but you have to keep in mind that even though it's down, we're also slightly down in enrollment. So, there's, there's a little bit of a catch-22. So, it's not red because it's not down to a point where we're saying, "Oh, my goodness, we're not doing well." It's kind of more to the point of, don't forget that our enrollment overall is down, so therefore this number would be down as a percentage of the overall. Our Workforce Institute enrollment, so this is our baseline. This is where we're hoping we get to. So, this is our non-credit side of the house. We did look to the prior year just to kind of give you an idea of where we were headed, and you can see that in comparison, there's been huge gains. Congratulations to the Workforce Institute. And then we wanted to have something that had to do with completion. We chose the performance funding rate for completion, and this looks at students who complete in 150% of the time. And this is old data, right? Because all the performance funding stuff is from past years. So, this is fall of students who were in degree-seeking programs, fall of 2014, and whether or not they completed within 150% of the time. You can see we're doing well in that metric. And then we have another completion metric, which is how many degrees are we offering? So, this is certificates, all of our academic degree programs, including PSAV, and we're down, and we're down for two reasons. One, we had a, we have, we used to have, we don't, we used to have, we had a large uptick when we started doing auto-graduation. That was when we looked at past students, and we were giving them those extras. So, this is to be expected. There's nothing here that scares us. We are wondering whether or not we didn't, clearly enough, instead of really high target, but you know, we're SPC. We can set high targets and see how we're doing. So, that's not anything to be too concerned about, but you can see how sometimes you do get red. And then we also have, this has to do with our learning. We offer the CSE, which is a nationwide survey to all students, continuing students, and there's one section where they take a whole bunch of the questions and they compile them together to get an overall average, and it's focused on active learning. And we do this survey every other year for students, and you can see, we went up in this one, and we have a target of going up, and we will actually have the next round because we just finished the CSE in the fall. We'll have it next time we see you, we have the next update on that. The only other thing I can tell you is that if you're on this site with your phone and you want to check these things out because it's super cool, underneath the strategic plan, we have additional metrics underneath both retention and recruitment. I'm not going to spend all that time looking through them, but we will send you out the link. At the moment, the link is only accessible if you're on an SPC site. It will become part of the SSO or the Single Sign-on where you can get onto it anywhere. But this was a huge amount of work from my BI team and the work that they're doing, and it was fabulous, really easy to understand.
Yeah, great. Good job.
If you're on campus, like Sabrina said, and you want to get into our BI system, you actually have the dashboard to get right back in BI, look at the data that you need for success, for enrollment, and student outcomes as well. So, that's available here.
Okay, so, quick reminder, community of care, how we do everything, three pillars, what we're hoping to get to, five plans, retention, recruitment, resource allocation, employee engagement, and learning experience. Those five are the initiatives that we're doing in order to reach the three overall big things, I suppose.
That's a lot, Sabrina.
A lot. Good luck remembering that. Are there questions I can answer before I turn it back over to the really cool stuff?
Fantastic.
Awesome. Thank you.
So, thank you, Sabrina, for kind of laying the foundation for what we can do today, which is all about those five action plans. And in fact, Board of Trustee members, the group in the house, these are our executive leadership team members. Can you all raise your hand if you serve on the Executive Leadership Team Council? Okay? So, these are the owners of the plans that we'll be covering today, and that's really important. You know, we have to have the infrastructure in the, in the room to be able to propel this. And we meet after every board meeting with our president, and we work the plans. So, what we're going to share with you is what we've been up to the past six months with your help, and each of our five, you have picked the five areas. And we're going to start with really what I consider to be the best area. To serve on this team as well. So, we're going to start with recruitment, and I'll ask our champion, Dr. Patrick Renard, who please set the stage for us.
Thank you, Andrea. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, President Williams. I am going to share a few of these highlights. We were here yesterday, and we just looked down some of these as a group. Before I do, I just want to share some data with you. So, when Sabrina and I addressed you in August and shared our enrollment, we were minus two and a half percent in student semester hours. The fall term ended last Friday, and as of Friday compared to the end of fall of '17, we were down minus .9. So, we really closed the gap, and it's not just the recruitment. It's the whole design of these groups and the work that the whole college family did to do that, okay? So, I'm going to touch on a couple, and then I'm going to have some of my colleagues do the same. So, over the last six months, we have been working on a new staffing model with recruiting. So, prior to last fall, we had three recruiters out in the community. Now, we have seven. So, we were hearing complaints that we didn't have enough boots on the ground, and this is addressing that issue. So, they are out there, they are close to the campuses, they work with the provost, identifying the needs of the campus and the communities that those campuses serve. So, we have work to do, we're refining that, but certainly a much larger presence than we had a year ago in terms of people out in the field. The other one I'm going to address is PATH, which is an acronym that stands for Pinalis, Access to Higher Education. You may be familiar with this. I think it's had some media attention, but this is a, an outreach that we have begun with USF St. Petersburg. We started meeting back in July. You know, they are having the consolidation. The admission requirements for their students is going to get a little bit higher. So, the first priority is to kind of shore that up, and what can we do to help those students that may not get into USF St. Pete? The larger, bigger picture is providing awareness, opportunities for all post-secondary avenues in Pinalis County and access to post-secondary education. So, we'll bring in Pinalis County Schools, we'll bring in PTEC, we'll bring in Pinalis Technical College. Ultimately, we may bring in Eckerd to look at an entire educational ecosystem in the county, okay? So, I'm going to turn it over. Who wants to go next? Dean Demers.
All right. So, as Dr. Renard told you, we've been working to close that gap, and it all happened really on the front page of the website. The deans got together, we expanded our offerings. Rather than having just traditional sixteen-week, we had twelve-week classes and then more additional eight-week, two, and we've got that same plan moving forward for this year. And to let everyone know about it, my colleague in marketing, Rita Farlow, and Harrison Aquino reworked the website, and that all started happening. So, we got the front page of the website. I don't know whether you've had the opportunity to look at it. You see that there's lots of opportunity for interaction, and we had a lot of cooperation with marketing, lots of great new marketing materials that were not designed to just be printed and fall into whatever hands. They were designed to be printed as needed and put specifically in the hands of the people where they would do the most good. And Rita has brought some to share with you. I think probably from my point of view, the key message I would like for you to understand is that we are looking at the schedule all the time, trying to figure out how to make it a schedule that will work for the students we have this year, not five years ago or even two years ago. And their lives are so complicated when, I'll just tell this one anecdote. When I speak with students and ask them why they're not registered for next semester, they tell me that they want apologies online colleagues, a real teacher, but their job requires that, which means a face-to-face class. That would be their preference, a face-to-face class. But their job requires that they have a different schedule every week, and it's all scheduled through their cellphone, and since that's true, online is their option, and that is our goal, to have a class that would be available to them on their schedule, but will work for them. So, Rita?
Well, also, to piggyback on what Susan was saying, I think we've got to talk about winter session. Oh, my gosh, what a huge success that has been. And that was really when we sat down with Dean Demers and Dewan Fox. I don't know where Dewan went. And Dr. Smiley was a huge, huge part of this as well, Susan Calerick in online learning services. But this new winter session has been a huge success, and it was at that time we started talking about the new view for class schedules. One of the pieces of feedback we heard from students is that it's a little wonky when you try and go into My Courses, My SPC, and register for classes or view classes. So, we came up, our web designers and Harrison Aquino came up with an opportunity for students to be able to go in. They can click by modality, they can click by campus, they can click by day of the week, they can search by words like map or algebra, and they get this comprehensive list. It's beautiful, it's easy to read. They can add them into their cart, their favorites, and then when they go in to actually register, it's all right there and laid out for them. So, that was a huge one for us, and I really believe that that helped with winter session and how full we were. Another thing we did, as Susan mentioned, was tried to really get feedback from deans about what students are asking for. So, we came up with a few new things, and I have samples for you, but we now have a bachelor's degrees specifically for bachelor's piece. We also, and Dean Demers asked that we bring this, too, but each semester, the CACs, the Career and Academic Communities, are doing events. And so, these go out at the beginning of term, the welcome back events, and they go to prospective students, current students, and then they have a nice little handy-dandy piece that they can reference, and we're hearing that students are keeping them with them, they're circling them, you know, here's the events I want to go to. And so, I'll give these out to you guys, but we have some new materials as well. So, I think those are some marketing wins that we had this year.
So, our enrollment in winter term as of late yesterday afternoon was 373 students who have signed up for boot camp over Christmas, taking a single class. In one case, he's taking two classes, but he and I have talked and his commitment, okay? But otherwise, it's a test case for us, and we'll see whether or not it works for student success.
Right, right. And then as far as the Workforce Institute, you know, we have a very aggressive enrollment goal when it, when it comes to recruitment. Forty percent, we're looking to increase over the next three years in enrollment. We're making some great strides. As far as increasing collaboration between Workforce Institute and our academic partners, that's been very intentional with our deans, with our provosts, with our academic chairs, with our instructors, with, with our recruiters. And in fact, just to get a sense in the room, how many of you in the room have been actively engaged with the Workforce Institute team this past six months in creating academic pathways and connections? So, we're making, how about your teams? You and your teams, that counts. So, we're making some great strides in that regard. In another area, Workforce Institute on campus, we have been offering classes on every one of our main campuses over the past six months, and that's going to continue to expand. The main campuses right now are downtown, midtown, and our Clearwater campuses, but we continue to stretch out and have a presence there to serve our communities. Finally, our business leader convenings by campus, we've held five, and three over the past six months in Clearwater, Seminole, and St. Pete Gibbs, and we've had over 250 leaders convene in those leaders, leadership convenings with our staff, and we've really asked them to help us identify priorities, workforce priorities. And so, we've gone back out to each employer, and we've been meeting with them to develop workforce plans. So, we're making great strides in the recruitment areas. And I wanted to, before we segue over to our retention, board members, would you have any input on any accomplishments that you'd like to share in the area of recruitment?
I have a quick question.
Please. Please.
As we move through each of these areas where it's obvious so much work has been put in, are there measurables for almost every category as you all are working as a team to figure out?
We do. We have measurements for every single strategy and every action plan.
And just to follow up on that, at the end of every year, so at the end of this year, so in June, you'll actually get a compilation report that says Strategic Impact Plan Report. It'll look pretty, marketing will help us.
So let's hear for the recruitment team. I invite Dr. Anne Cooper, please share with us the good work.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Stone, Cyber, members of the board, and Dr. Williams. Retention is the idea of keeping the students we have until they achieve some credential of value. Now that may not always be a degree, but some credential of value that's going to help them in regards to their economic mobility and their progression. And so one of the things that we're very proud of is this, compared to last fall, we have seen a decrease of 11.5% in our student withdrawals. We've also seen an increase in our success rates, even within some of our diverse populations. However, we do recognize that we still have a gap. And so there are various initiatives that we are bringing to the table to address those situations, such as culturally appropriate pedagogy for our faculty as well as those in our learning support area. So I'm going to let some of the others share some other comments in regards to that. And I'd like Dean Smiley to start.
Certainly impressed by Dr. Williams, without question. And certainly impressed by Dr. Cooper, without question. And certainly encouraged by all the deans. We're working very strong towards addressing the issues associated with African-American males. Want to encourage you today to know that at this particular point, there are 1,109 of them. We have our fingers on each one of them. So we're encouraged to communicate with them more so. And we have got some strategic plans in place in order to do that. Each one of those students will receive a personal email from us at strategic points along the way in each of the various special parts of the semester. So as it stands at this particular point, we believe that this is going to be impacting our students. We're looking at the numbers very carefully. And I know our president is pleased, those numbers are ticking up a little bit. In other words, the success rates of our African-American males are increasing. So we want the board to know that we're working diligently to put our fingers on each one of them and to work closely with them to create an atmosphere where they'd be more likely to succeed. Two things in our close with this. We provide for them, without question, words of encouragement. I can assure you, we certainly put on them words of encouragement so they'll be empowered with a sense of their own success. In addition to that, in each of the ways and each of the times we communicate with them, we lay out specific strategies for them to be able to succeed. These are some things that you can do that will make you successful in your college work. So as relates to our work with them, we're excited about it. And we believe we're going to have a tremendous amount of success in improving the work with our African-American males and improving their success rates.
We've got a right-hand corner with the development of the milestones. There are 10 career and academic communities at the college. And each of those have multiple programs in them. And one accomplishment this year was we've established milestones in each and every one of those programs. And those milestones are simply significant data points that have to be measurable and they have to be relevant to each quarter of the program. For example, 1 to 25%, 26 to 50%, et cetera. They're significant in that quarter of the program. Those metrics will be tracked and measured against benchmarks so that we can help to reveal and remove roadblocks to student success and thereby promote retention, progression, and completion for our students.
Good morning. I wanted to talk a little bit about learning resources for human. That's one thing you see here is the expansion of learning resources and tutoring services. The Health Education Center actually had a wall removed. The NIP Center has grown over the years for our medical and health tutoring. And there's been an expansion over there, it looks really nice. If you want to stop by and take a look at that at some point in time. Dr. Smiley hit upon the idea of relationships. Relationships are really critical with the learning resources. That's what we work to do. We learn to build relationships with our students, whether they're in a physical space or they're online. One of the areas we want to see more growth is increased of online tutoring. That's one of the areas that we have worked this semester to provide both math and writing tutoring a little bit more. We've had about 24 hours a week in that area from our in-house. We actually have a third-party system that we've used for several years and we will continue to use because of the diverse needs of our students. However, this provides for us ability to make relationships, connect, and then continue to provide completion and support throughout. Also, Dr. Cooper mentioned our work with cultural competencies. We serve a wide variety of people. We want to make sure we're there for them. We want to make sure we offer them the right ways, the right techniques, the right, whether they're visual learners or they are oral learners. We want to make sure we have what we need for them. So we've been learning through that, our staff's been trained. That's a little bit from us, I think. Dean Chang, good morning.
So we can talk briefly about the evolution of the math pathways. Ever since summer, our math faculty have engaged in a series of collaborative conversations to discuss ways to streamline the math sequence so that students can complete the math requirements in an accelerated fashion where they can progress and complete their requirements in a much shorter time. It was not too long ago, a few years ago, where students would take sometimes four or five semesters. That's about two and a half years just to complete their math requirements. And over the next few semesters, a couple of semesters, as we implement this with a streamlined math pathways, students will have the opportunity to complete their math requirements in one year, possibly less. So we will go a long way in making that happen. So stay tuned, everybody.
Great work by the retention team. Let's give them a round of applause. Board of Press, team members, any additional comments in the area of retention for our team related to accomplishments or?
The decrease in withdrawals is amazing. That's something to really be celebrating.
It really is. Thank you.
I have one quick question. So going back to the point on math, if we can shorten up the time in which the students can get their math requirement done, and this, I guess, accounts for everything, are we finding that the amount of time spent at St. Petersburg College has a direct correlation to success rate as far as actually graduating with the degree? If a student that takes eight years to get all the way through isn't going to get to the end like the student who can do it in four to five years? Is there any correlation?
The national conversation says that if you go full-time, then you're more likely to get to that degree pattern. I think that we've noticed that for our students who are going more full-time, so either nine credits or 12 credits, they are reaching their completion in a higher rate than those who are going part-time.
Got it.
Life just gets in your way if you're hitting eight years.
Right, okay.
Doesn't mean that they don't return, they might do in 12.
Sure. Thank you.
All right, let's move to learning experience. We'll invite Dr. Shannon Alrick to come up and lead the way.
And team.
And team.
Everybody. Yeah, yeah.
Good morning. We're going to start off with the big ones, accomplishments. Student success rates have increased. We targeted, I think it's 80.8% over the three years in our Strategic Impact Plan. And we are well on our way to getting there. Now, that's a lot of work, yep. And we'll talk more about that in our 15-minute overview. We also kind of piggybacked off of our retention. We're seeing a decreased rate with our withdrawals, which is really great. When we first started the learning experience, we wanted to really kind of hone in on the fundamentals. So we went around and we talked to faculty about what were reasonable expectations of them and then what were reasonable expectations of students. And based on those responses, we are actually able to aggregate some goals for the learning experience. And so our goals are to make sure we're providing a robust and engaging syllabus and making sure our students know where they stand in the course with timely feedback and updates to those gradebooks. We also want to work with faculty to develop proactive outreach strategies so that if we find a student that is unengaged or maybe struggling, that we have a plan of attack for that student. And obviously, we're going to need to look at it differently if we're talking about face-to-face versus online. So online, you might look to see, hey, they haven't been online for a couple of days, a week. You're going to want to reach out to that student. Whereas in face-to-face, it might be after that first exam that you have that particular conversation. So working on faculty to develop these communication plans that are appropriate for their modality that they're teaching. And then also, our fourth goal was to increase student success rates. We're going to talk a little bit about some of the data that we've looked at to kind of hone in on where we should be looking when we do our 15 minutes. A lot of work has went into supporting those goals this past semester. And that has been instrumental through SEDAL. So I'm going to turn it over to Heather so she can talk to you all about SEDAL support.
Okay. So I don't know if you guys can read all the chicken scratch here, but we established our shared values for the learning experience after last spring, lots of meetings with faculty. And we established them early this fall. So once we established the goals and milestones here that we have, we knew that we needed some professional development for our faculty to kind of get them on the same page for this. A lot of this stuff our faculty are already doing, they're doing it well. But we want to reinforce the value of this for students. So one of the first vehicles that really sets the stage for student success in the learning experience is the core syllabus. So we had some webinars, we had some, you know, kind of professional development sessions. And these will be ongoing, by the way, throughout eternity probably because we can always improve our syllabus. But really kind of focusing in on what makes a good syllabus that, one, students are going to read because we know they don't always read everything. And, two, helps them come up with their own pathway to success in your class. How do you communicate those tools? How do you take away, you know, kind of the stigma of reaching out for tutoring? How do you reach them and let them know this is how you are going to be successful in particularly your course? So make it very specific to your course for the entire semester. Also, two, including expectations for things like your gradebook. Not only are we setting the stage for faculty's expectations of students, but what are the students' expectations of us? When will we be communicating grades? How will we be communicating with them? When will we be replying to emails? What do we expect them to do with the feedback that we receive? So kind of that double-sided relationship of the learning experience. We'll talk about more in our action plans as well because we've got more fun stuff planned and need some feedback on what would be good to reach our students. Also, two, the student engagement. You can't just tell a student, "Good job," or "You didn't hit the mark on that." They really need to know what they did well so they can keep doing it and what they need to work on to improve it. So we had some sessions on that as well. I'm going to come back to the supporting students with life issues because this is kind of an ongoing thing that we've got. And then we kind of rounded up the semester with what's your plan for your students? So Shannon had alluded to the communication plan, reaching out proactively to those students. You can see we have increased faculty tools or spark usage that kind of replaced our early alert system. But that's the way we kind of nudge our students to say, hello, come back. You need to make sure you're checking into this course or reading the email that I sent you, things like that. So we talked about coming up, faculty coming up, and this is preparation for spring, with a game plan, if you will, to kind of say, okay, if I've got these students that are kind of going off the path and they've set these goals and they're not meeting them, how am I going to periodically monitor that? And not only nudge them with negative, but nudge them with positive, too, so that we can give them that positive feedback to say, you're doing a good job. You've only got a little ways to go and you're going to make it to that finish line. You're going to achieve your goals. Now, the supporting students with life issues, that is something that, again, we can do. All of this, great stuff, and then life just gets in the way. So we have a kind of an ongoing support, if you will, through our mental health awareness program, working with Ms. Kemp and her team as well. You know, getting those resources into the hands of our faculty. And if a student comes to them and says, you know, listen, I've got a housing insecurity or food insecurity going on or childcare, then faculty can say, you know what? I have a connection for you. The faculty member may not be able to solve the problem, but perhaps they can kind of triage to make sure that we can keep them in that class, help them be successful, and then reach that goal. Because a lot of times we'll see that, you know, whenever students drop off our radar, it is for those life issue issues. And we've wanted to make sure that it's front and center for our students or in our faculty, excuse me, and staff. So we'll make sure that we are continuing with that. Kind of a couple of other things that are up here, the deep data dive. We are still doing that and you'll see that when we talk about it in our action plans. We really want faculty also to dive into their own data, particularly with the achievement gaps. Really specifically in your courses, in your classrooms, what students could use a little more of the good stuff that you have in your teaching. So we'll be continuing that. And periodic course review, I don't know if we touched on that, but that's something that we do with our courses annually. We kind of clean them up, but periodically, we take a look from all of our faculty that teach that course to decide, okay, is the curriculum working? Is it teaching what our students, what they need for the workforce? What can we, you know, improve? And then also trickles down to the teaching as well. How can we improve the teaching to support the revised course if necessary?
Let's hear it for our learning experience. A great show of team solidarity. Thank you. Board members, any other comments or questions regarding our learning experience area? All right, let's move to our employee experience and engagement area. We'll invite Ms. Carol Brandt and her team to come and share some great accomplishments.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chair Stone, Cyber, board members, President Williams. So as we've talked about the community of care, one of the areas that we've not always talked about is our employees. And so we feel that employees that are engaged and are enjoying their experience of their employment then have the opportunity to reflect that and are better at influencing their students and working with them and hopefully in creating success. So we are looking at the employee experience and their engagement. And how involved are they and how satisfied are they? And so we've not done, this is our first opportunity where we've done a survey of our employees to gauge their engagement. So we're kind of at the inaugural stage in garnering that information and then figuring out what to do with it. And how do we implement change basically where it's necessary? And how do we celebrate our successes as well? So the first thing we did was created basically a website where all the information pertaining to an employee engagement survey would take place. All information regarding the vendors, information regarding what areas we would be seeking information in. And then we, and then each vendor, we went ahead and we gave a little background of what they had to offer and basically their proposal to us. So all those proposals were listed. We then made sure that we had pre-survey implementation communication that came from Dr. Williams. And then we also had, once the survey was conducted, we also had post-communication from Dr. Williams. She just recently sent out an email to all staff members letting them know what the expectations would be next. And so we have received the results. Dr. Williams has reviewed those results. And those will be brought to the board, actually, in January. And so we, one of the main things that we wanted to make sure that we included was we wanted a process that employees felt comfortable with. So we did, of course, employ an outside vendor. We wanted to make sure that it was confidential, that they felt that there was no stress or no, just opportunity, I guess, to freely share. And then we had made sure that there were a couple of open-ended questions so that they could give us their positives and their areas of improvement.
What was the participation rate of the survey?
So the participation rate for the survey, which you'll get more in detail, was actually overall, all employees of the college was only 40%. But when we look at our full-time budgeted position employees, it was actually 80%, which is over the benchmark average. So, and in that, all employees, that included adjuncts and OPS employees, student employees. So some of those adjuncts in particular, maybe it not even worked for us that in this current semester where the survey period was given. So they may not actually be fully engaged to even check their emails to even see the link to participate. engaged to even check their emails to even see the link to participate. So, that's an area of opportunity for us to grow for the next time we look to give this survey, is to see how we streamline that.
So, just real quickly, just want to really emphasize the communication piece to it. So, we are with this, taking the approach that we take in our classrooms, right? So we deliver information, we, as a college, provide a lot of information, often electronically. But then what happens to that information? We assume that it's read, and we assume that people understand it perfectly, and then implement it without a hitch. Well, not always the case. So, a big piece to this is the communication plan that we've rolled out prior to the survey, during every phase of the survey, and now we're getting ready to roll into the employee focus group piece of it. So not only saying, getting employees ready for what's coming, and saying, this is coming, please participate, here's what to expect, but then also checking for understanding. And using our frontline supervisors, our leaders, giving them extra talking points, here are the questions that we're hearing, here are the concerns that we're hearing from employees around this, please reinforce, yes, this is anonymous, yes, it is confidential, yes, your voices truly will be heard. And then using the frontline supervisors, again, to funnel those questions, or the need for clarification, back up to the team, and really to the full ELC committee to assist with that. So, as we say, we manage our processes, but we lead our people through change, and that's really what this is enabling us to do. So this is actually very, very exciting, and thank you all for making this a priority, because this is, actually as our vendor calls it, this is where the magic really happens, so.
Is there a plan for what to do with the information afterwards? Having been a part of employee engagement surveys for a very long time, I know one of the challenges is that we tell them that they're being heard, but then they do the survey, and we do nothing with the information?
Absolutely, and that is a concern. In fact, you'll see when we talk about the results, that is one of our lowest scoring items, is that employees have very little confidence that anything is going to change as a result of this. So, the very next step, we sent out, Dr. Williams actually sent out an email, once she got the results, said, we've heard you. Here are the preliminary results, here are our next steps. So as soon as we get back from the break, we're going to start a series of employee engagement working sessions, where we are going through the results with those employees, and basically saying, help us understand this. This is where we scored high, but more importantly, these are our opportunity areas, what do we need to do here? And then just the constant communication, and then designing committees, and whatever actions need to be taken around the improvement areas, and just fully hitting the ground with that. But the biggest piece is the communication throughout the process.
And then, will we resurvey?
Yes, yes. Yeah, we're looking at probably 18 months, 24 months, we will do the full survey again. But what we're thinking also is we can do these pulse surveys, where we take those areas that are, that we're looking to focus on, based on what the employees say, and we can, we can do that maybe every six months, just to see how are we doing in those particular areas.
Thank you.
Our last team, the resource alignment team, we'll invite Dr. Brian Miles up and his team to share. And you'll notice that we wanted to maximize our resources, so we have the low-tech whiteboard in the spirit of that also.
That's better. There we go. Make you get closer to everyone there. Good morning. As Andrea mentioned, this is a team of resource alignment, realignment, and we lead by example. So we have yielded our opportunity to use the fancy electronic whiteboards to the other groups, we've also yielded some of our time, so we will move through this very quickly, and I will begin. As you know, we have taken significant efforts over the last two years to align and realign resources college-wide, financial and otherwise, and the last six months have been no different. We have had some notable accomplishments, not the least of which includes hiring a new governmental relations director. Arid Eddy has joined our team, it's been a few months now, and she hit the ground with it. She has made several significant proposals that I believe will translate to operational dollars, no pressure, following the legislative session this spring. In addition to Arid's hiring, we have also made the switch from, or we're starting to make the switch, from our technology refresh program, where we refresh technology, our individual desktops, laptops, every four years to keep up with the pace of technology. We are now switching to virtual desktop infrastructure. And what that means is, we will have our computing power located in powerful servers, and that power will be projected out to dummy terminals college-wide. That will create a more consistent, higher-quality user experience. It will also save us money down the road with that new VDI program. And then, as you well know, our health insurance. We have seen our health insurance costs rise significantly over the last few years, so we have put in place plan changes, which will take effect January 1 of 2019, just a few short weeks away, and we believe that will help finance a health insurance plan that we manage at the college. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Teresa McFarlane.
Me. Okay. So, when we're talking about the, well, I'm going to start with Dr. Williams coming to us and saying that we had to engage, sorry, I have gum in my mouth, sorry. We had to engage our alumni association, we had to come up with a plan for that. Usually with our alumni association, we have about 300 members, and we've had that, I know, for like the last five years or so. So, working closely with Diana Savino, we came up with a communications plan that would allow us to better engage our alumni. We first started with a survey, and with that survey, we had the, we had our alumni to tell us what it is that they're expecting from us to complete, to continue to engage them. So with that communications plan that we had through Diana Savino, we were able to first start with expanding our alumni board. We also then had started engaging them through like a mixer that we had, our first mixer was October the 2nd, and it was a success for us. And we, with that, we also have a complete presence now at graduation. So at graduation, with the new alumni table, we stand out, and we now have students that come up to us, and we also engage them through social media. We were able to increase our alumni engagement by 658% within, since January, and we're very proud of that.
So, I'll start with the Student Success Center. As you all know, in the beginning of October, we finally were able to receive the last three and a half million dollars that was needed in order to complete that construction project at the St. Pete Gibbs campus. And then another thing that we have been focusing on for the last couple of months has been the, our real estate footprint, and really analyzing the way that we utilize our spaces, and taking a look at exactly, you know, how can we reorganize and better utilize what we do have? And so, what we're hoping is, through consolidation, we'll be able to generate one-time savings that we can utilize in other areas. And also, we've taken a look at the rental spaces, and developed a, pretty much a manual that would give information to all of the campuses, so that they know exactly how much they, they can rent the spaces out for, and also taking a look at our lease bases and our current contracts. So, additional information will be given to you in the next couple of months, so.
Jennifer, from our grants department.
Hi, good morning. So the grants department is currently managing roughly 34 awards just this year, for about $19 million. But in the last six months, we've brought in about $700,000 in funding from new opportunities. And in addition, we have about $550,000 pending through the state to support our new collegiate high school. So we've gotten through the second round of interviews for that, and we are very hopeful that we're going to receive that funding to help to support the new collegiate high school. In some of these new awards that we've gotten, one of them was through SAMSA, to support a college-wide mental health effort. You heard Heather talking about some of the things that the Mental Health Oversight Committee has done. This takes that work and expands upon it, and makes it a college-wide effort to support students, bring in community partners, and really engage on how we can help students persist through college, and address the life issues and the needs that they have. One of the other programs that we have is through the Department of Education to do our cybersecurity program. It's actually going to help build our baccalaureate program in cybersecurity within the next couple of years. So we're getting funding to help drive student enrollment, and make sure that we are on the forefront of what we can offer as a college, for what students need and what workforce needs are in this area. I'd like to also say that we closed out our $5 million Centers of Excellence grant through the Department of Education, and this resulted in over 500 scholarships for pre-service teachers, also increased their completion rate and their success rates on math exams, and helped develop new course content. So we've been busy, and we will remain so.
Janette, you want to mention a couple things?
Sure, I'm not an official member of the resource alignment. I purposely did not say that to you, but. But as Brian mentioned, over the last two years, we've done a lot of work realigning, but we knew that there was another level that we needed to go to in our resource alignment. And that was looking at zero-based budgeting. And so the two main things of zero-based budgeting, which we've been working on in the last six months to implement for January for the fiscal year 1920 year, is that, one, comprehensive budget, and two, it looks at the resources strategically. So we look at the resources, and we'll be aligning them to the five action plans that Sabrina mentioned earlier. And so that's one of the major things we've had, and we're actually going through, which ends next Monday, is a pilot for the zero-based budgeting, looking at what the college should look at, some of the budget supervisors, what we need to hear back, so we're able to plan, and not just set a budget for year to year, but even looking at, what are we thinking about two or three years from now? And to help be agile and flexible, because it's not just about the five actions, but also, what do we want to invest in for the future? And so those are the things that we've been working on in the last six months. We actually will be kicking it off in January, and we'll be having a training college-wide.
I have a feeling Janette will have a lot of friends this time of year as we get ready to allocate resources. James?
When you take a look at resource alignment from an academic perspective, two things come to mind. One, my time at General Electric Aircraft Engines and Fidel Investments, we were charged to be innovative, to increase the revenue, I hate to use the word revenue, but the revenue for the corporations, and we had to do that at an individual level. So when I take a look at CCIT, we have been partnering with the local businesses to help develop new programs, like we have an AS degree in data science, we also are working on our bachelor of science degree, we've already got a proposal draft written, we've already gotten the course criteria developed, and also, we're meeting with 21 companies here soon to vet the need for the cybersecurity, even though we already done some research for the grant office to justify that need. So the goal here is to partner, we're partnering with Dr. Milton and her team to work on cybersecurity-related topics for her area. And at the end of the day, we want to be responsive. We're doing community outreach, we're utilizing the Department of Juvenile Justice, we're using their resources to help bring technology to the students in our area. We're also getting ready to do a plan with the, what's the name of that high school? I can't remember it. Calvary High School, Christian High School. We're getting ready to do a project with them to utilize AR/VR technology to help promote learning in the classroom environment, specifically history, science, things of that nature. So, we're trying to align ourselves with all these other organizations, so we can better promote what we want to do for our students. And also, we're doing that with provosts, we've been partnering with some of our provosts to help bring those technology resources that are needed, and also here recently, with Workforce Institute. We need a Mac lab, because we don't have a Mac lab, and we are missing out on doing iPhone programming, operating system programming, because we don't have Macs. Well, we have 16 Macs sitting here in this facility that we did not know about, or at least I did not know about. What's that?
We got you, Mac lab.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Again, it's about aligning ourselves with what we have here at the college, and also outside the college, so that's what we're doing.
Last but not least, Eric Harper.
So we recently had, earlier, we had an ambulance donated to the Health Education Center. So this was actually important, because it helped set another piece in motion. We were able to take that ambulance, bring to the HEC, take one that we had at HEC, and move down to Allstate. From that, we had that accredited as a satellite institution last week. So we have 100 students coming in the building on January 7th and January 14th respectively. So we've added 100 students by, just with the support of a donation of a piece of equipment. So we want to continue that momentum, these are community programs, and working with our local EMS and fire to be able to grow and build upon the success that we've had with the EMS program.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments regarding resource alignment, Board of Prestigies? So we are just getting started. Now, the fun begins, we're going to dig into our action plans for each of the five areas. And the way it's going to roll is, this table, closest to our Board of Prestigies and our president, will be one of the five action areas. We're going to start once again with our recruitment and action planning team, and they're already strategically positioned and ready to interact with our whole work. What we will do is reference a single slide to Sabrina's point, this is our three-year slide for recruitment, it shows our goals and our strategies. And then, on this screen, this is where Tina will be capturing our board members' strategic considerations related to this plan. And so, as you share key things we should consider as we're moving forward into the new year, Tina will capture that. And before we move on to the next area, we'll just ask you, okay, of the five or six or seven things that you've shared, maybe can you help us prioritize the top two to three that we can really focus in as we launch into 2019? You'll see that we have a time clock, because each of our sections are going to be 15 minutes in length, just to keep us honest, keep us on point. And then PJ will also put this slide here, so that you all can have ample vision, and then we're going to bring up our business intelligence to complement whatever metrics that you'd like to see going along. So, that's kind of the way we'll roll. Any questions or, there's a lot going on, yeah. I would say, this is a key, this is a key slide, because this drives our conversation around recruitment and our action plan. And I will ask Dr. Renard if he'd like to just kind of share, get us grounded in the action plan.
Thanks, Andrea. All right, good morning again, just want to kind of set the framework or the foundation here. So you see a couple of metrics there, those are our high-level recruitment goals, the first one is on our academic and credit side of the house. For 1718, we had 9,390 new students, that excludes all of the accelerated high school dual-enrollment, really college students. So that's our transfer students, our FDIC students. And our target is to increase that by 2020 to, by three and a half percent, to 1718. You see the 1617 metrics, so we did see a decline, just for some context. And then on the Workforce Institute side, Andrew's already done a great job between 1617 and 1718, but she wants to increase that by 40% by 2020, 2021. I'm going to start with a couple of items, but I want the whole team to pitch in. We do a very good job at recruiting our high school students. I think we've shared some of the success that we've had with that population. However, the data that we have from Peneil's County shows- However, the data that we have from Pinellas County shows that that population is going to begin to shrink. For the next three years, it's going to shrink 7% according to the data that we have. So that is not where we need to focus our attention. We don't want to lose students there. We want to continue to recruit there, and we will. But I think the real bread and butter is our adult learners. And the 25 to 45-year-old that has no college under their belt, or maybe they've got some college but no credential. And that's where I think we need to really focus our efforts. So again, we kind of touched on the number one there on the right when we talked about our accomplishments with the new recruitment model. So we now have more people out in the community than we did a year ago, and we need even more. So as you ask us about challenges...
Sorry, can I ask one question?
Sure.
So if the new recruiters aren't in high schools, since we've already, we're touching those facilities, you know, fine right now, where are they going for the most part?
Well, that's one of our challenges. They still go out into the high schools, but so do our academic advisors. And the high school principals have said they want more of the advisors in the high schools instead of an annual generalist.
Right.
So I think one of the challenges, Mr. Stonecifer, has been that the role of the recruiter is changing. Historically, it's been a normal generalist, a motivational speaker, one that can sell the benefits of college. We need someone that can sell the benefits of St. Petersburg College.
Right.
Rita, you want to talk about number two?
Sure. I think we talked a little bit about it, also with the accomplishments, but we're really trying to collaborate and communicate better with our deans and our faculty and our frontline staff. They're the ones who are there with the students and know what they need and the prospective students. So that's been something we've been working on quite a bit this past year. I think it's been going great, increased lines of communication and trying to respond to those needs. So that's something we'll continue to do moving forward, and we gain a lot from that in marketing. We do have student social ambassadors. We're blessed to have several of those out on the campuses. So we do actually get a lot of great feedback from them as well. And nothing helps us better than to be able to actually communicate with our target population.
Dr. Goodwin, would you address Fuse and Ignite?
Sure. I think Fuse and Ignite are probably some of the best recruitment tools that we have because you can talk with parents about the fact that, come to SPC, earn your degree, and move right on to a four-year college. Not only is it, you know, cost savings, but all the admissions challenges that students experiencing, especially with the new move to make USF a preeminent institution, it's harder and harder for students to get in. And basically, that's one of the ways they improve their quality is by just not allowing a certain strat of students to get in. Those are excellent students, really top-flight students, and we're very happy to have them. And so just for example, one aspect of that partnership is these students who are denied admissions, and I think there were like 200 of them here this fall, were sent letters to say, look at SPC, complete two years at SPC, and you will gain admission to USF at that point. So I think Fuse and Ignite are going to be fantastic recruitment tools. You heard Pat speak a little bit about PAT. That's a similar kind of initiative, and I think both of them are going to help us a lot.
We've already increased the number of students this fall. Beginning of fall, we had 380 students enrolled in Fuse or Ignite. We're now about 4/3. The goal that we set and shared with the board at the beginning of the fall term was to double it to 760. I think we'll easily surpass that.
Let me just ask the Board of Trustees, would you all have any initial strategic considerations or comments that you can share with us, given we highlighted the first three of our strategies?
Well, I'm just going back to the question I was getting at a few minutes ago. If we see the most potential with getting more adult learners to St. Petersburg College, I guess I'm just wondering what the most efficient way to do that is, and I'm sure that's what we're working through right now. You've got to try a lot of different things to see what is effective. I see increased collaboration with marketing. I'm wondering if, is it a recruiter going to specific places, or is this more of a marketing strategy to get the SPC name and benefits in front of this 25- to 35- or 25- to 40-year-old crowd?
I think it's both, yeah. So there's the marketing piece about giving the right collateral and working to get, whether it be online, getting that information out there. But another piece of it is recruiters now that they're especially not just going to high school, but they're going out to the community, they're going to businesses, they're attending events. And so we're also working on what flag do we need to have, right? Because that really interests the students when they come by to stop at the table, to have something to speak to our recruiters about, maybe take with them beyond just a piece of paper.
Sure.
And with our resource allocation and our constraints with that, we're working on how do we strategically do that so that we're able to stand right next to a USF or even now like a Hillsborough or Pasco Panado, and we're having them come to our table as well.
In addition to that, we're also looking at our businesses and organizations that offer tuition reimbursement. We know for a lot of our adult learners that are currently working, they're really looking at how do I pay or fund to really excel within my organization? So we're doing a specific strategy where we're looking at businesses that offer that so we can know how to recruit those individuals as well.
And with the challenges right now, lots and lots of baby boomers are, or were, finally retiring. And that meant that there are a lot of companies who have long-term steady employees that have not achieved degrees, and they're ready for them to, as part of succession planning. So focus on our four-year degree programs or lower-division completion programs with specific businesses. We have an outreach to the county right now to, for degree completion with county employees so that they can handpick some specific employees that they think will be the next generation of leaders in county government.
I think a strategy that we have only scratched the surface, and we have some work to do, is collaborating with Workforce Institute because this is what they do. And on the academic side, we're used to going into the high schools, and we're used to having students come to us. And so we're having to really flip the script and change our way of thinking.
Right.
We're meeting with Andrea's team, recruiters meeting with Andrea's team, and we're learning a lot, and we have a lot more to do.
And as we go to these companies, you know, it's low-hanging fruit. We've just met with them in the business leader convening, so that gives us an open invitation to go back, build their workforce plan. We're bringing provosts, we're bringing recruiters along with us and some of our academic partners. And there are three things of the workforce plan that we're building. The first is the tuition reimbursement. We were just with Pinellas County last week, and of their thousands of employees, only 10% actually take advantage of their tuition reimbursement. So we're going to build a plan that will allow them to take advantage of that. We're going to bring classes onsite to Pinellas County. They also have, for example, 60 engineers who need project management. So it's very targeted training that we can build for them specifically, but it's not just a onesie-twosie kind of approach. We're building a memorandum of understanding so that we can serve each organization holistically with all of the services we have at St. Pete College, so.
That seems to be, that seems to be something that's very worthwhile in pursuing is the tuition reimbursement angle. And I would venture to guess that there's a lot of companies in Pinellas County that haven't even thought about giving their employees tuition reimbursement because they're not thinking through how this will benefit them in the long run. Like, you know, this is a relatively cheap benefit for their employee that's going to keep them loyal to their company because they got to go to school, and they're getting a better employee out of the deal. So maybe there's a way to, to kind of outline how this helps you as a business owner or as a business, and why you should be thinking about tuition reimbursement as part of the benefit package for your employees.
Yes.
Instead of just 401K and healthcare, which is great, but this is something a little extra that would go along the way, I would think. I bet a lot of companies don't even think about that.
It's a differentiator in employees.
It's one of those things that went away in '08, '09.
Yeah, that's true.
A lot of companies have to put it back on.
True.
So we have three minutes and 30 seconds. I'm not sure what's going to happen.
Well, going with the marketing and the community presence, something that I was thinking of also with the resource alignment, I happened to be driving down 118th in, on this, I don't know where Mark is, on the Seminole campus. They were the, the City of Seminole Holiday Parade was convening on campus before it tossed down the street, and it just got me thinking about how active, I just happen to drive by the Seminole campus a lot, so I see how active that campus is in the community. And I feel like there's so many opportunities to bring the community. So the Clearwater East Library on the Clearwater campus a couple weeks ago, and the community presence at that library was so significant. And so I think there's a real opportunity to collaborate with resource allocation and alignment and that community on campus, which will result in recruitment. Because if we're hosting athletic events or non-college athletic events in our gymnasium and on our fields, and I think about Clearwater being so proximate to the baseball field and soccer field right there, there's such an opportunity to get the community onto our campuses and make some money for us potentially, but really serve as a recruitment where, once we get the entire community thinking that this is where they should go, and this is the best opportunity. I would love to see that articulated in the strategies.
Well, and since we have a minute and 55 seconds. Rita and I, I hope you don't mind me sharing this, but we spent, gosh, about an hour, hour and a half on the phone a couple of weeks ago talking specifically about this. And I had thought about it before we talked, and then we had a great conversation, I thought about it more after we talked. And some of the things that I don't know if we're already doing, that I could have asked you on our follow-up call that I didn't get to, is do we have, you mentioned the ambassadors. Do we have any kind of a referral program where, you know, I always draw on my own experience. My daughter wanted to go to Tallahassee because that's where all the friends were. She didn't care about FSU. She cared about where all of her friends were going. Do we have some kind of a referral program where if you bring a student along with you, you get something for them? Is that an option?
We don't. We talked about it quite a bit. We do have a campaign that comes in which tries to pump the excitement, but it's more of a high school program more than anything, but I think it's a great idea. And it was Michael Vigyu at Bocas Yega who said recently that he realized, and I was at a award ceremony last year, and they had the kids stand up, and every third student said that they were going to St. Pete College. And you have San U and FSU and all these other schools in there, but the amount of students who want to come here, so that particularly, I think, would be a great idea for that population.
And also with the, another opportunity in the high schools are the private schools. Because whereas before, a lot of them are looking to the USF and the FSUs, now with the programs we have through PAT, through Fuse, Ignite, there's a whole level of interest of get them to come to SPC, which their children can't. And so we're seeing more and more, I know, in private schools, when they're doing, what have they chosen? We're starting to see the SPC shirts. And so to your point, that's another place that we can kind of work to try to build on.
The only other thing I had written down based on our conversation is what also applies in my own business during this, is the riches are in the niches. And if we are uber-focused on the workforce aspect of what we're offering, getting those sales programs, I'm sorry, I'm beating a dead horse on that one.
It's true.
I really believe we could have a tremendous amount of success with that. And then making sure that we're doing a good job of communicating to the communities that we're hosting those business roundtables in, because I don't know how we're getting the word out about those, but I bet if we were more prolific in the message, that we would get more participation.
Before you leave, I assume that, I'm going to ask for affirmation, that the St. Pete Chamber, the Clearwater Chamber, the Beach Chambers are all involved in this?
Yes.
Susan talked about the county. We've got 24 municipalities.
Yes.
And what about the CBB with hospitality? Are they ever at the table that we cross call in?
I don't know about the CBB. With the county, we just presented last month at the county commissioners' meeting to share those issues and needs. We attend the mayor of mayors, I'm probably saying it wrong, but it's the mayor's council. We do that. Our provosts and deans separately are different members of different chambers, as well as rotaries and some of the other groups throughout the whole county. So we're addressing it there as well. And I personally have been taking my rounds to the different city councils. I've done Seminole, St. Pete, Clearwater. I had a few, we're going around to make sure. But the thing that's been hard is there's not a time that I don't present, and I'm sure my colleagues as well, that people aren't shocked, that people aren't saying, really? SPC does what? We have that? So we haven't cracked the code yet, and we've got to get to that. But we're still getting a lot of that, a lot of surprises, people not realizing who we are and what we do.
But Bill, we are planning a big mayoral convening of all the municipalities in the spring. So, yes, so it'd be great if we were going to be came to.
Can we go with?
Absolutely.
February 6th. I know your language.
February 6th.
Exactly.
February 6th, exactly. Thank you. It'll be right here. Tina has captured some of your key input and considerations. Are there any that we should ensure rise to the top? I know we will consider all of them. Did we get, I think, eight?
We got eight. So we have marketing strategy to focus on adult learners, focus on businesses that offer tuition reimbursement, number three, organizations who don't currently offer tuition reimbursement, number four, training and referral program for students who circle with friends to come to SPC, focus on long-term employees who have not yet finished their degree, collaborating with Workforce Institute, bring more community events to our campuses, such as what Ms. Holle requested, bring in sales programs and communicating to the community that we are hosting business roundtables. Did I miss anything?
Outstanding input for us as a team, yes? Yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to do what we call the switch, and we're going to invite our retention team to please come to this team. Good afternoon. And recruitment team, we can come here, do you like?
He just changed the world while we're not here.
Retention.
Okay. So we'd like to give you a little bit more specifics on our goals in regards to retention rate. Three-year strategic metric is 3.2% increase. In 2017-18, we moved from 68.8% to 69.3%. So we've kind of inched up. We would then have a goal of achieving at least 72% in 2021. Persistence, if you may recall, is the term-to-term return of students. So fall to spring, we were at 79.8% in 1718. We're aiming for 81% in 2021. And then our spring to fall, which is the more difficult one, we were at, I should say, 1718, 74.5%, and we're aiming for 75% in, from spring 20 to fall 20. We know that if we can retain students, they are more likely to complete a credential of value, and so we would like to see an increase in our completion rates of 2.3%. The numbers before you hear are our first-time-in-college students who are degree-seeking that, for example, started in the fall of 2013, their completion rate was 46.7%. For that same, for the new cohort in fall 2014, the completion rate, and we're looking at 150% completion. the new cohort in fall 2014, the completion rate, and we're looking at 150% completion rate, so that's three years, was 47.8%, so we are headed in the right direction, and then we are hoping that our cohort that started in fall of 2016, that we would achieve a 49% completion rate. Number of things that we're doing, that we kind of introduced previously, when we talked about accomplishments, but we'll talk a little bit more specifically, are the strategies you see listed up here, and so we're going to start with what we're doing in our career and academic communities in regards to what we call milestones, that are things that can help to accelerate a student's progress through their pathway, or remove a barrier to their progress on their pathway. Dr. Steele's going to address some of that.
Well, it says, "Tracking community milestones," that first strategy. I mentioned earlier, it's not just the community, but each community has multiple programs, so it's specific milestones tailored to each and every one of those programs, so it's quite a lot of drilling down by our team, using faculty and other leaders in each program to identify what those metrics should be, and they need it to be relevant to each quarter, each quarter, you know, what's, what's important in first semester, second semester, or third, and there's different things to look at in each one of those. And we have both academic, which would be a course-specific, some of them lay out quite nicely, music program, we have music theory, one, two, three, four, it's, and they're all absolutely, essentially you cannot major in music and transfer unless you were really successful. And then, so others have other significant, every, every program's identified the academic metrics that are important to that, and the faculty have helped with that, program leads to help with that. So then we have, secondly, the student services kind of metric, which would involve things like, did the student have a My Learning Plan? Was there, were there visits to the classroom to talk about resume? Were there, is there a LinkedIn account established? Did they have a photo taken to become, looking like a professional and integrate with the professional community of the future, to start doing that now? So all those are indicators of how we're doing, and, and we say it accelerates completion, it really, it doesn't go any faster, it just removes the barriers and removes the, what you might say, distraction. In the past, students, "I'll take some of this, and this, and this," so this keeps them all focused on what do they actually need, and how are they doing, how are we doing, and how can we meet that need? So that's how.
So at this point, should we pause and just open it up to board members? Do you all have any strategic thoughts or considerations we should capture at this point?
I have a question about with pathways, which was something, I think, amazing to be able to put everything and say, "If you want this end result, start here and take this path." But on the other hand, I would imagine that we have students who think they want this end goal, start here, get a quarter of the way through or a third of the way through, and then throw their hands up because they either changed their mind on their end goal, or the life circumstances changed and they don't. Do we have a, is it, can, do we have a resource to take those students, who might be small in number, I don't know, and kind of where they've shaken up, knocked their pathway, and say, "Okay, if this isn't your end goal anymore, this is where you could get in that same period of time with what you already have," so we're helping them, and I don't, and I'm not implying that we need to go back, I don't think we need to go back to, to the way it was when everything was a free-for-all, but I would think there's a significant number of students who think they want something, get halfway through, and then panic because they either don't want their end result, or something.
Right, and that, there are a couple of things that we've done, when we built the pathways, for each of the programs within a career and academic community, and for most of the programs within all our career and academic communities, their first few courses are the same, their comp one, starting their math. There may be a course, depending upon the particular degree path, that if they've already completed that, it may have to go in an elective bucket, but they won't lose as many credit hours. That's also why we want to make these career and academic community opportunities available to all of our current students, to help them make a better informed decision. And so it's, that's also why, for each of these career and academic communities, we have a triad. It includes the learning resources, a faculty member, as of course, as well as the deans, and an advisor. And as our advisors are moving into a case management approach, then if a student should come to them and say, "This isn't working for me," then we can obviously work with that student to say, "Well, you still can use these credit hours," and, you know, encourage them to visit with some of the other career and academic communities to see, "Where is my niche?" And, and we did have a video of a gentleman who started thinking he wanted to be pre-med, but then soared when he moved over to our bachelor's degree in business, and is doing outstanding today. So yes, we, we recognize that that's an important part.
Students actually have the ability to go into their, the registration area and run what we call a what-if report.
Oh, good.
So, "Hey, I can't stand sludge anymore, I want to actually do whatever," they can run it, and I'll tell you all of the courses that will transfer over.
The pathways is such an amazing resource, so I didn't want to become so rigid about pathways, that then panic.
All right, on the track student engagement, through the SPC ID scanners, as well as attendance rosters, we're, we're able to track not only the volume, but which students are participating in events, activities, and service opportunities that are offered through student life and leadership, as well as the 10 academic communities and in the classroom. And then we use that data to not only, we're looking for an increase in the percentage of students that are participating, but also to see what students are participating. And one of the recent examples of how we use that tracking to increase engagement was the recent Spirit Week that we had, where all the campuses had events and activities for students to get involved in, so everyone was kind of focused on the same goal at the same time. And for our online students, we do have our Titan Thursday webinars that come out throughout the semester, as well as Workplace, which is an SPC Facebook-like environment where students can engage with other students, as well as faculty and staff at SPC.
Yes, I want to talk a little bit about learning resources there with the increased learning resources center usage by all and diverse populations. I mentioned earlier, our, our interest and commitment to diverse populations, and particularly, we know that there's achievement gaps there, particularly with Hispanic males and African-American males, one of the things we want to focus on is to provide a guide for our students through, so there's one point of contact from learning resources, we'll be able to reach out particularly to the ones starting that are fresh, as well as those that are in academic jeopardy, and provide for them the reach-out, so they know what services are available, we provide for them positive messaging so they remain encouraged as they go through the process. And most of all, we provide genuine relationships for our students. Those are the ones, the things we build most on, and we can maintain them, of course, with the faculty, so as they go through their courses, we're able to find out where those gaps might be, intervene as necessary. Secondarily, another piece of our, of our puzzle for this area is the online, and we want to make sure that we're in the online, that is not just the frontier anymore, that is where we are here and now. And again, it goes back to making those relationships. As I mentioned earlier, we have third-party systems that we utilize to get online tutoring and about, I don't know, we probably have 15,000 visits through there, but we want to make sure that we're connecting with them, not just a digital interface. So we want to embed more in courses, at the course level, as opposed to just on the outside exterior area, we want to provide more online weekly skills workshops for them, group and peer tutoring online for them as well, and we're committed to that, to begin to build those relationships and to expand and make deeper connections.
Shall we pause and get some input from our board? Anything that we should consider in any of the reports you've heard moving forward?
Yeah. Is there an opportunity with the tutoring, so I had a charge show up in my account that I realized was a recurring monthly charge that I tack down to with my daughter on a tutoring site. Is there an opportunity for us to make money as a college on that, instead of all these apps and other people that are making money on it? I mean, I don't know.
Well, some of the tutoring is paid for by student activity fees and other things like that, but we've never charged a student for tutoring.
But sometimes it's 2:00 in the morning, and the paper's due next day, and they want 24/7 access.
They do get 24/7 access with our online.
Really?
We have that with an online third-party system.
They get 24/7.
They receive that.
But we don't make money off of it.
We do not.
Most people make money on it, I'm just saying.
I think with our population, it might be a, a challenge for them to pay for the service, and we do use some of their student activity fees for some of the services that we provide, and so they pay into it through their fee.
Do they know that they have 24/7 access to tutoring?
It's made public, and students use it. Yeah, the students use it. Yep, they use it.
Anything else? Move on.
Okay, 2 minutes and 44 seconds, all right, won't take too much. So just wanted to add a couple of things that I mentioned earlier. So part of the finalization of the math pathways would really involve the phasing out of the, a couple of our gateway prerequisite courses that students currently get college elective credit, but not college-level math credit, so we phased those out and allow more direct enrollment and access into college math course, where students will be able to accelerate the progression and completion of their math requirements. We're looking at full implementation within two years, some things we can do right away for effective fall of 2019, and what we were talking about earlier about students switching degree plans, if we have students who complete their math requirements for a degree plan, and they find that their degree plans change, which would involve perhaps a shifting of their college math requirements, then with our revised math pathways, one of the things I really like about it is that they can go directly into whatever college-level math courses that they need, instead of having them take a gateway prereq course that would, that would bottleneck their progression, so we would eliminate a lot of that going forward.
Okay, and then obviously, we know that if we have the right programs for our students, that they are likely to be retained. So this past year, we have added four certificates, Megatronics, Water Quality Technician, Early Childhood Certificate, and Medical Equipment Repair. We've also added sub-plans to some of our bachelor's degrees in sports management and educational interpretation, or interpreting, excuse me, and then three to our associate's degrees in digital photography, advanced manufacturing, and data technology. And we did this based on what we were hearing from the community and employers in the area, and we want to, of course, continue that process of building the various types of programs that we have, where we know there will be jobs for our students, and that will address their interest areas as well. We can continue sharing other items if you would like, or?
Well, you know, I just wanted to say, I think for retention, the, the key point that we keep coming back to, and I know we've talked about before, is what you have number one on the list there, which is just making sure that the students have a direction, a path, and updated information throughout the process to keep them on that path, so they don't feel like they're floating out there, and they're not sure what's next, and aren't sure where they stand in the grand scheme of things, and they don't know how long it's going to take to get to where they want to go. All these things and constant reminders are extremely important, and then I think the student engagement part's critical, too. Students are much more likely to stay with their programs or, or enrolled in college if they're engaged in something outside of just their classwork. So finding ways, which again, you all already have up there, finding ways to keep them involved and get them involved, I think is just critical. So I, I think, I think you're on the right path. I don't, I don't know if I have anything more to add. Any other comments?
We can add one about what we're doing in regards to the pathway, if there's a moment, very quickly.
So very, very quickly, our curriculum office has just redesigned our current advisement report, it looks exactly like the pathway now, and one of the first things that when you log on, it's going to show you how close you are to completion. You're going to have an immediate pie on your dashboard, and when you get to, when you get to the 9.2 upgrade, it's going to have even more about this.
Right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
We capture three considerations, continue supporting students who later change their pathway and end goal, continue offering tutoring as a free service paid by student activity fees, and student engagement, continue to make sure students have a path and know what it is. Any other comments we should capture for our team? Appreciate that, board. We'll now do the learning experience action planning team. And we'll start our 15-minute clock.
Hi, everyone, thank you. So you guys obviously know that I teach microbiology, in microbiology, I do a lot of personifying because I'm trying to teach my students about invisible things, so I'm kind of use that tactic here as well, so just go with me. So we've already kind of talked about the foundation, and we've set these goals for the foundation. The reason being that we looked at the foundation and didn't actually go into pieces and parts of engaging the classroom first, is because we want to make sure that we have the pieces and parts that are vital, like a vital organ. So we think of the syllabus kind of like the brains of the operation, and the gradebook almost like the heart, it's pumping us along as we go through this process. So with that, our action plans moving forward, we have the syllabus being posted three days in advance. We're able to monitor that and track that through OLS, they give us a report. Also, we've mentioned that we have a goal of making sure that we have an engaging syllabus. That's a little bit more qualitative, a little bit harder to kind of track, you can't just say, "Hey, OLS give us a checkbox," yeah. So we talked about this at our last committee meeting for the learning experience, and we decided to come up with a rubric, so we're going to be working on that rubric, and then we also worked on some ideas and suggestions for how to implement that rubric. So maybe at department meetings, maybe when the faculty first come together in fall, we can have that rubric being utilized, and then that can go to the deans for review.
What, sorry, Shannon, what do you mean by engaging syllabus?
So, Heather, do you want to?
Something, one, that students are going to read, I mean, something that they're going to come back to as kind of building on what Shannon said about, you know, kind of organism, a living document. So, for instance, you know, towards the end of the semester, I was giving feedback, and I was saying, you know, "Remember, look back at what we have as far as the, the points, the policies that are in there." So engaging for the students of today, if you will, chunking it out so that it's not, you know, 20 pages worth of, you know, 12-point times new Rome.
Legalese, yeah.
Exactly, so making it readable for them. Also, too, something that they can kind of have as a quick reference, so that when they're sitting there at 2:00 in the morning and saying, "Oh, my gosh, what do I have to do, blah, blah," they can go in hopefully very quickly.
And make it a human document, to make it so it's in a, a language that everybody engages with, that understands. Put some memes in it to, to speak at that, at that level, I mean, that's what I do. And to have, to feed, have fun with it, to actually to have that back and forth as a starting place for communication, for relationship between teachers.
Yeah, make it approachable.
Right, and really setting the tone for the course, but also, we've talked a lot about, and this is something that we still need to explore quite happily with our faculty, and, and kind of talk about, you know, what are some promising practices of creating this persona for a faculty member, and, and, you know, again, making it approachable so that they're not reading this, this legal document and saying, "Oh, my gosh, I'm never going to email that faculty member," but kind of putting it, you know, personalizing and putting your own stamp on it, so that it really sets the, the tone and the expectations for the course in a comfortable way, so that everyone's collaborative in the success.
It's our first opportunity to sell the course and ourselves.
Right.
That is a good suggestion. I know we have the ability.
No, it's a great idea.
You're talking about an Asian being spoken to, and they truly want to, and we're assuming that everybody that comes into a classroom, their first language is English. And secondly, where they're from, the environment that you're from, that's how you, you know, feel good going into the new environment, and if that's not welcoming, you're not going to do well. It sounds like you haven't engaged, you haven't thought about that at all, so.
I'm sure some of our faculty may have.
Not us in the state, especially in the state experience.
Spanish, yes.
Yeah.
You've all have been working really hard communicating out to faculty, and you did the whole faculty survey, that was recently, right, that we?
We did the input session.
Thank you. I'm like, I know we just got our.
Campus by campus.
Yes. What type of, are you offering incentives? I know the expectation is that the faculty will perform in this manner, but sometimes. but sometimes, even though we expect something, it's still nice to give incentives to do it. Are we offering any incentives for our faculty to be as excited about this as we are?
So that's a very chumpal when you say that because that was actually a question that we asked the learning experience committee the last, I think it was two, it was two times ago. And it was interesting because there was some mixed responses as to whether or not we should.
Right.
Because the, a lot of people that were there said that this is the expectation, so we should have to incentivize. But we are talking about that, so that is part of our conversations.
Some of the early conversations focus on spotlighting folks that are doing promising practices, bringing them in and sharing their expertise. You know, Shannon's exactly right. It is a very touchy area because that's their job. That's what they should excel at. We also have some very humble faculty who do an amazing job, and we may not know it. So, you know, spotlighting is kind of the first step. You know, we've gotten a little, you know, kind of fun with getting folks to attend our webinars and participate with sort of some swag that we have. But, you know, again, it's essential to what we do. So it's kind of setting those expectations and then celebrating is kind of the first step that we've talked about.
Let me add too a little bit on the dean's piece. When we have our monthly meetings, those are opportunities to highlight or spotlight faculty. We ask faculty, what's going on, what's working well, to bring those things there. But that doesn't go out per se to the entire classroom.
So moving on to our next action plan, we talk about how the gradebook is kind of like the heart, kind of allows us to kind of feed our student information as we go along. So when we take a look at the gradebook, we want to make sure that everybody's engaging with the gradebook, giving timely feedback, letting the students know where they stand. So we've talked a lot about that, and we've asked OLS to design a dashboard that will allow us to track faculty using that gradebook. They have busted their butts and got it together for us, and we're actually going to be able to use that in spring. And as we talked about at the last BOT meeting, we're going to actually look at the baseline and see where we're at and go from there as to our next steps on how to engage faculty, just to see the numbers, the percentages. And is it more full-time faculty or adjuncts that we need to help push into having better practices with the gradebook? So those were.
Nutch.
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 Nutch. Encourage, encourage. And we also have taken a look at the kind of reflective piece of the learning experience so we can only get better based on feedback that we receive, whether it be self-evaluation or from our students. We have collectively found that we're not particularly happy about where our student survey of instruction stands and our faculty evaluation stands. So our next action items are to revisit the SSI. We actually have a committee that has already met several times, and we're hoping to implement a revised, updated SSI or Student Survey of Instruction by fall of 2019. We recently had an FGO sent meeting with the deans, and the topic of the faculty evaluation came up. And collectively, everybody was like, ugh. So we said, okay, well, maybe we should take a look at that as well and try to streamline that and make it more effective in our evaluation process. And that's really going to allow us to pick out those target areas of where we need to focus on in the actual classroom. So our job as this committee is not to go into faculty and say, all of you guys need to be doing this because that might not work for certain areas or subjects. It wouldn't work to go in and say, okay, in comp one, streak some bacteria out. That's my activity in my class. So we want to make sure that we're being very focused for our faculty. So having those evaluations, reflective pieces, will help with that as well. And we don't want to forget about our students. So we're actually kicking off this spring with having student focus groups, talking to them about what works for them. And we're hoping that collectively with this evaluation process, sort of reflective process, updates, and the student focus groups, we'll then be able to start talking about best practices. And that's the, really, the next big, like, the muscle piece of the learning experience is figuring out which piece we need to work on individually or collectively as a departments, and then start focusing on and keeping that up, if you will. We also are going to be hopefully working with SEAL to design some opportunities for best practices and some of those faculty resources for best practices. And then our student success rates, as I mentioned, is an achievement. It's been amazing to see our student success rates overall continuously to trend upwards, which we're really thrilled about. However, if we take this moment and look at the disaggregated data, we see some horrifying achievement gaps that are just not acceptable. And that's where we want to spend some of our time focusing in the next year as well. And Laura's actually going to talk to us a little bit more about those data points.
Yeah, I think you might have some supplemental slides in your success rate data. I just want to take a minute and walk through a few of those points. Mr. Gibbons, to your point, are we mean students where they are? Are we understanding that they might speak a second language, and our syllabus may have to be changed to maybe support those students? But right now, looking at data for this fall, we've seen our first time in college student group, which is a group that's focused for performance funding, about 3,500 of those students. Overall, together, we increased our success rates by 1.2%. African-American student group increased about 0.2%, but there's a gap between our white student population group and our blacks by almost 20% in success graph between those two groups. Our African-American students are at 56.6% overall, while white students are at 73, almost 74%, 73.6% in their success rate. So our call of action is really to look at those student achievement gaps and address those students. If you look at our male students, for our black male students, we have about 187 students that are black male in our first time in college group, and their success rate was 52.4%. And that was an increase of 3.4% from last fall. But that gap between where they are and where white students are is about 18% gap in their success rate. So we're looking at these things that we're doing here in college success and our learning experience to help. Make sure we eliminate achievement gaps where possible. You can look for that same trend is when our gateway courses, which are those high and growing courses that are in the beginning, we see those same gaps, even though we've seen some increases in those over the last year. There's still a wide gap between those groups. And I think Heather's going to address a few of the things that they're doing in the classroom from SEAL perspective.
Two, actually, a minute and a half, I promise. One of the things that you and Dr. Cooper talked about earlier is our cultural responsive pedagogy. We had our college event faculty get together this fall. They actually launched it on just February day, kind of a little soft launch of kind of a foundational understanding for all of our faculty and our staff, our learning support resources. Matt Bodie and his team are actually in that course right now, kind of taking a look at it. That is going to provide a foundation of just sort of understanding what that is so we can bridge these gaps and, you know, decrease the gaps. It, you know, definitely addresses the needs of all students and it improves learning for all students. One of the things that it really focuses on is making sure that you have supportive, inclusive learning environment, that students feel comfortable getting into the material, speaking with other students, they feel that their, you know, experiences are being heard, and that they can reach out for help when needed, and that folks are there to help them. So that's kind of the beginning of our journey on all of that. We would like to, SEAL would like to continue with professional learning communities starting next fall so that faculty and staff could get together and continue kind of this look at themselves of not only how they teach, but also how they serve students, making sure that they're listening and understanding, you know, all the needs of the variety of students that we have. If you guys have ever seen our SPC Reads book that's going on right now, it's The Hate U Give. We have a theme that we're going to carry through next year as well of diversity, equity, and inclusion. So that basically at every turn, we're going to have these conversations occurring and kind of this reflective view of us as individuals and how we serve our students. Also, our keynote speaker for our teaching and learning conference this year is Julie Warden. He's going to give a wonderful keynote to all of our faculty and staff in attendance on how to motivate and reach millennials, how to kind of make that connection. He has a variety of experiences in his life as well, so we wanted to also get him in front of students. So we're doing two sessions that day with students as well, kind of talking about how to make the most of college with your challenges that you might face, and then how to translate that into a job, into a career and a life.
I need to go to that, too. I need to relate to millennials.
April 12. There will be memes probably.
Oh, okay.
Just, I think it's really great how instead of coming up with a handful of things to address changes in the lowest common denominator of performers, you created a plan that the entire faculty in school can implement, and those that are the highest performers can just get better. And this might be something they've already done, as well as the lowest performers. I think that's a very difficult thing to do, is to find that balance of not just find, you know, rewarding those who are doing great already, and not penalizing them and making them do things unnecessarily.
Any other strategic thoughts, board members, for our learning experience team?
Don't wake me up. I don't have an answer. I don't, I don't like it, but.
Well, we're taking a look at, the one actually compiled the, sounds a little funny, but the top 25 lowest success rates for African-American males.
Sure.
Yeah, the lowest success rate, the courses that have the lowest success rates. And we have a list of 25. And if we take a look, some of those have to do, well, the top 10 or so are math. So we're hoping that the pathways that Dean Chain was talking about will help with that as well. So there's actually some kind of overlap between retention and our team as well. So we're kind of seeing some of the same things collectively.
And also the reflective nature. It's very personal for every individual faculty member. And our business intelligence system allows us to drill down and actually look at, you know, those different populations in our courses to see who is struggling. It's one thing to look at your overall success rate. You're really to drill down and kind of chunk it out. We're actually offering in March some webinars and some sessions for faculty to really get into their own data and then come up with a growth plan of how do I improve this for these various populations? And hopefully, it'll benefit all students as well.
All right, so here's what we have so far for our Board of Custom Guidance Point. Focus on the gap. Can we make that an important focus to improve upon? Create Spanish and other versions for our syllabus. Offer incentives to faculty to be excited, engaged in surveys. Continuing spotlight faculty who do an amazing job. And then continue to focus on engaging syllabus. All right, let's hear it for the learning experience. Invite our employee experience and engagement team to switch places please. I need to dig into employee experience right now. All right.
Okay, so as we've already spoke about earlier, we have just completed our first survey period. DecisionWise was the vendor that we chose. And their framework was to, was designed to measure employee engagement really in five various areas: in meaning, autonomy, growth, impact, and connection. And of these areas, they wrote down the questions in such a way that we could measure certain levels, such as in four particular areas: my job, my team, my supervisor, and the college as a whole. So we could determine where our areas improvement might be or where our areas of strengths are. And so we have that baseline information, and we're going to look at three of the metrics, which are up on the board at this time. And I think Margaret can go through that.
Yeah, so the three metrics, these are the overall ones that we'll be looking at as we administer what will probably be, like I said earlier, either an 18-month or a 24-month survey, full survey. Obviously, the survey participation rate. Participating in a survey alone is an engagement factor. It says, I care enough about the institution to take the time to fill this out and offer my opinions. So our baseline, again, 44%, but if you look at our full-time employees, we're above, well, above the DecisionWise's global benchmark at 80%. The overall favorable rate is another one that we want to look at. What that measures is the number of questions that employees responded to with either an agree or strongly agree rating. The fact that 72% of our employees responded that I either agree or strongly agree with these items, according to DecisionWise, indicates an emotional response. So that's, while it's consistent with the norm, their average benchmark for a first-time administration survey, that's pretty significant. So what that tells us, if you look at the engagement equation of the heart and the head, we've got the hearts. So that's the hardest part. And then the employee engagement level. So that's an important measure to look at because what that is looking at is the level of discretionary effort that employees are giving or that they're bringing to the job every day. So we are at 74%, and what we want to do is work on what's called our opportunity group. And then those that are performers and then are highly engaged. How do we move the level and increase those levels of employee engagement and get them to bring, particularly within that opportunity group, get them to where they want to bring 110% every single day and feel that their efforts are making a difference? Some other things that are not up there, but we mentioned it before, and I believe you may have a supplemental handout on this. As we have these focus groups, and we're targeting about 15% of the employee population to include in these focus groups, we're probably going to look at those items that are our lowest scoring items. And four out of the five of those have to do with how employees feel about the organization. And so an indication of how we work together across business units, what we think about our systems, our processes, those things that employees have to say and how do we design this so that we can work most effectively together. As I mentioned earlier, the confidence level, that is something that just by the communication factor alone, you often see that going up because employees are beginning to see, okay, they said they're going to ask us for, they're telling us, or ask us for our opinions. And just by communicating to them, we heard you, we're going to keep telling you where we are, that often tends to make that confidence level go up. Dr. Williams, one of the questions that you wanted to have asked is actually our highest scoring item. Okay, so that's one of the reasons we went with DecisionWise also is because they gave us the ability to be able to customize the survey and add a couple of questions in there that were specific and unique to our institution. So the question, I am committed to improve my knowledge and skills for my current or future roles, was something that you felt was important, not only because of how the college is changing, but how higher education across the nation is changing. Are our employees committed to do what it takes to enhance their skills, their knowledge, whatever it takes to help us continue to meet these needs? And again, that was our highest scoring item at 94%. So again, we, you know, it's encouraging data. It is our baseline data. We will, we will ask these series of questions, probably, like I said, in six-month pulse checks. We can do that internally without any additional cost so that we can see how we're going, the trend that we're moving in before we do the full survey again. So I believe anybody else wants to talk about the strategies? So Tori, do you have any strategies that?
So shall we pause and just see if the board has any comments related to the employee engagement survey?
I'm really proud of the survey and the fact that we did the survey and the number of full-time employees that participated and were very honest. It gives us a roadmap to use going forward to improve the employee experience. If you remember, when I applied for the job, that was one of my number-one priorities, was to improve the employee experience. And so having the survey and my 360 has been very helpful in making that happen. And so we'll be bringing the full report in January. They'll be presenting that to you.
Did they tell you, like oftentimes they'll tell you this one has an indicator, this one's not really... Do we know on the ones we did really well on, where they fall in the importance? And the ones we didn't do well on, where they fall in the importance?
Yes. They have, what do they call them? Linking questions or indicator questions that cut across every organization. So we'll present that, bring those to you because those are ones that we'll want to keep across. So they tie to the specific five factors of engagement.
And one of the other things, the company we chose, what they also provide for us is they can identify our low-hanging fruit. And from their experience can suggest some things that we can look at and partner to implement and assist us with what we find from our focus groups on implementation as well. So we also have their experience with their other clients to be able to share with us what they've used to raise different areas.
Do you get raw, the things we blacked out?
We get the comments. We actually do get the comments. We don't get the raw data, but they kind of summarize that, that the comments are specific things that we do get. That'll be, the comments basically are the seasoning behind the numbers, if you will. So that's part of what the employee, the focus groups will help us do also is what exactly is meant by this and basically help us clarify what we're seeing as well as verify. So the way the focus groups were selected, it truly is random. And that's another thing that we want to keep communicating to employees just as we really, really, really had to help them understand that yes, it is confidential. There is absolutely no way to trace this back, individual responses back to an individual. We're doing the same thing with the focus groups. So there is a logarithm, somebody that is more computer savvy than I am. But we basically take our list of, gosh, over 3,200 names and then type this formula in and it spits out a list of all names, given the demographic. So every possible demographic that makes up the college. So it truly is a random list. And again, we're shooting for 15% of the population. And that will take place, gosh, kicking off in February, getting everybody time to get settled with the start of the process.
Any other strategic initiatives we want to highlight?
I think the most important thing about this is we have to react. We've got to do something. Six out of 10 survey think it's a waste of time or basically, there won't be any changes. That's alarming. But it exposes a previous culture of lip service, no reaction. So follow-through is the most important thing out of all of it. And so it makes us...
As we're just sitting here listening to the different priority areas, you know, we, in order to reach these targets, it really is contingent on the best and the brightest. I mean, the folks that we have here are employees. So the focus on our employees and creating the types of environments they need to be able to do their absolute best. So it's just very exciting.
People are our greatest resources.
Absolutely.
Any other key considerations for our employee engagement team? Definitely, we must take action on what we hear about. Let's give them a round of applause. We'll switch now with our resource alignment team. Our final action plan today.
Okay. Last but not least, right? One stretch. For resource alignment and realignment, we have three metrics that we feel are important to track. The first one has to do with enrollment. We all know how important enrollment is and just to translate it to percentage of our budget. Tuition that we take in constitutes about 43% of our annual revenue. So it's a significant piece of the financial resources we have to conduct operations, start new programs, finance a number of initiatives. It's also the portion of our revenue that we have the most control over. About 50% comes from the state. The remaining 7% comes from alternative revenue sources, auxiliary dollars, facilities rentals, those sorts of things. We don't have a lot of control over what the state sends us for revenue. We can impact performance funding to some extent, and I'll talk about that for just a second. We can impact to a small extent the college program fund. And we're working on that with things like space utilization, which should translate to more dollars. But the greatest place for improvement for overall revenue is still with tuition dollars, which is based on enrollment. And I'm really encouraged to see all the enrollment efforts we have ongoing at the institution. And I think a 2% increase over the next three years is a very, very realistic target for us, especially in preparation for a potential slowdown in the economy over the next 18 or 24 months. If we can streamline our business model now and capitalize on the counter cyclical nature of our enrollment with how well the economy is performing when there is a downturn, I think we'll be better off for it and it will translate to more revenue or a greater percentage of revenue over expense at that time. So I'm encouraged by all that. The second metric is just the increase in state funding that we hope to receive over the next year. And this, to be clear, is an ask for operational dollars. Dollars that would help finance the economic, or the educational ecosystem that we're setting up with Pinellas County Schools and also USF St. Pete to help bridge the gap between under-education, under-employment, matching what our students study with the job needs out in the marketplace. And that will be a $4 million ask. And then a $1.2 million ask to help cybersecurity and also our physical security at the institution. Harden our institution for potential threats that we see all across the nation that's impacting institutions of higher education. So a $5.2 million ask this year from the legislature for operational dollars. And then third and finally, we really believe that we can and should achieve gold-level status for performance funding. Now, keep in mind, performance funding dollars only constitutes about 2% of our operating budget. Right now, it's about $3.5 million. But if we were to achieve gold-level status, that could translate into $6 or $7 million easily. So a tremendous opportunity here, we feel. You heard some of the retention data briefed earlier, and I just want to elaborate a little bit on that data. If we look at the three most recent years for completion rate that were calculated for performance funding purposes, we saw that in fall 2012, SPC was at 46%. Fall 2013, we were at 46, almost 47%. And then fall 2014, we were at 47.8%. So steady increase. Our goal now is 49%. Just to make it relative, our system average, the Florida College System average, the average for all 28 institutions, is four or five percentage points higher. At 53% in 2012, 53.5% for 2012 and 2013, and then 55% for fall 2014. The gold-level schools average is even higher. It's about 14 percentage points higher from where we are. And that's at about 61% for 2012, 64% 2013, and 66% for 2014. So I don't say that to discourage anyone. On the contrary, I say to encourage all of us that we have a tremendous opportunity here to cover some ground with our completion rates, which, and make us, help us buy for those performance funding dollars that are out there for those gold-level schools. So I just want to put those numbers in everybody's minds. That's what we're shooting for. And then I'll pause here, Andrea, before we get into the specific strategies.
Board members, any guidance, any reactions, comments?
Well, we did our priorities for our financial ask for this year since it's operational. Did you all look at a multi-year plan so we know how if we get this money one year, what would then happen the fall? Are we going to have to continue to ask or are these programs that will go away or help?
I would say we will continue to ask. This year, we focused on one year at a time. Part of it is strategy as well as who are we working with and how do we move forward now that we know? I think we have a better understanding on strategy and what way to go. But the ask this year has been one year. But we will be asking next year as well.
You got this, Eric?
And to add on that, we did talk about, Dr. Williams and I spoke together about the educational ecosystem funding and a plan to come up with a way for us to actually support more of that funding and to reduce the ask from the legislature every year so that we would max out and not continue to ask that every year.
As we get better at aligning our resources with our actual priorities, we see dollars shift to support the programs that are working, the ones that are, you know, producing completion rates that we need and aligning the students with what the workforce needs.
And then other big picture, I'd be remiss. But number three on your list is the Institutional Advancement Division. I know we've been talking all year about the foundation and really looking at the restricted dollars versus unrestricted dollars there. I think we'll hear that from our legislators, if that's advised directly, and the amount of dollars that we're asking of them. When we have a large pool of what we know may not be available money, they view as money where those balances are, how our physical plan and the foundation dollars fit in to those asks.
Absolutely.
I think the focus on hiring a new VP is going to be the first start to that restructure. So hopefully by March, we'll bring that person forward since we took that position back to the drawing board. We had advertised it, interviewed, start over. So we'll be pushing in that direction. I think the other piece is bringing on a new program and making sure we have programs that students want to take. It's been eight or nine years since we really brought on a new baccalaureate degree. Our baccalaureate numbers have decreased. And I think it's time to bring on new things, which will also bring more resources to the project as well as the footprint piece.
Footprint's a big piece. We keep saying it. You know, recommendations to the board are forthcoming over the next few months. We have 2.6 million square feet of space at this institution. Significant footprint. And not all of it is well utilized. So we're taking a look at all that. We're attempting to find ways to consolidate programs and functions into underutilized space, free up that other space for the potential to dispose of it, whether by sale or perhaps rented to generate some ongoing revenue. But extremely encouraged by what we're finding with that assessment. And as I said before, we'll be bringing forward recommendations or something. Do you all want to touch on any of these specific strategies that we have up here?
I think we'll go over the legislative piece to expand a bit since I've only been here for exactly three months. A few things that I started doing, we were really working on, and it does say engage legislators, so building relationships and really cultivating ones I have. I'm familiar with a lot of the legislators and their staff since I just left. I know that we have a few new members, so I've been working on getting out to them. I'm actually leaving here today to go to Tallahassee. They're having a committee week this week to really touch base with some of those new members and their staff members. I just don't know a lot of them. And that's really where we started. So far, we've had Speaker Designist Sprouse out to the Tarkin Campus to show off the BMEC program, which he seems very interested in. We've had a few other conversations with him as well about HUC specifically. We are trying to formulate a plan to move forward with that. Obviously, that is an incredibly large ask and the capital outlay funds just aren't there anymore, not in terms of a $90 million roughly building. So some things we'll have to do, we will have to get creative. We'll have to work on partnerships. I think the fundraising aspect's going to be a large piece of it. And really just working with any partners that we have in the community and then building that ask from there. And hopefully going forward sometime soon with something from the legislature, maybe over the next three years or something along those lines. But it's really in very early stages of planning at this point. I think when I got here, there wasn't a designated plan in place. So that's one thing that we're looking at. We've also had Representative Vatvalla out to the Florida campus. He's been to a bunch of business convenings, very impressed by the fact that we were working with local business members and that we were actually interested in what the local businesses had to say. So I think that that's a great impression that we made on him. He also committed to sponsor the ask for the educational ecosystem for $4 million in the House this upcoming year. So that's a really good thing we're working on.
Unless it's a standpoint, how are we dealing with the fact that none of our leadership is involved in any education policies and the chair of education policy or education provisions? How are we dealing with those issues? Have we engaged them? Have we spent time and letting them know what's in concur and ask hard and acknowledge their ask? But do they even know who we are? I spent some time last week with these leaders and I can tell you, they don't know anything about what we're talking about, what we're trying to do.
I agree with you, and that's something that we are absolutely working on. Because the more that I've gotten out there, I've noticed that they don't know what we do. And it's going to be an uphill battle. Yeah, absolutely. And you're right, we don't have anyone on any education appropriations committee while in the House. We're not even sure.
Chairs are on this region.
It's going to be an uphill battle. And all we can do is get out and I'm going to talk to the chairs of the policy committees as much as possible, really hopefully utilize the Speaker Designant and hope that he is going to be an advocate for us. That's going to be one of the biggest, hopefully, advantages that we have. I have also scheduled meetings, as many meetings as possible, with the education policy chairs and the appropriations chairs. I have a great relationship with Senator Diaz. We actually shared a space together the last couple of years, so I know them pretty well. And, you know, he's always been focused on K through 12, but I'm hoping that we can get him a little more on our side. So we're working on it.
Any other considerations, board members, or our resource alignment team?
Well, Brian touched on it a little bit. As painful as it's been the past couple of years to focus on realignment, you know, our realignment of resources and making some changes to the budget, this is really going to serve us well to set us up to succeed on even greater levels in the years to come. And so I think it was an important practice to go through and we're still going through that right now. But to assess our commercial real estate footprint, I mean, probably needed to be done for years, you know, to look at where we're at from a performance funding standpoint and see how we can improve on that. All these things tie together with the other areas we've already talked about. And to be able to look at this now and dive, you know, dive deep in, it's just, I'm excited about where it positions us for the future. So, we'll keep picking this apart, but the more efficient we can get, the better we're going to be.
Thank you. So, here are some of the considerations we highlighted for our resource alignment team. We currently focus on the one-year ask, perhaps look at multi-year ask, consider that, look at restricted versus unrestricted dollars, look at bringing in baccalaureate degrees, communicate with our legislators, programs we offer so they know us, and then continue to focus on realignment of resources. We appreciate so much your insight. Let's give our resource team a quick highlight of all five action plans and what we've been able to hear from our board members, the key considerations. Perhaps there are one or two more that come to mind. So, PJ's going to bring up our recruitment board member considerations on the main screen, and then we'll ask Dr. Patrick Renard if he wants to share as our champion going forward, some of the key takeaways for us as we go into the new year. Are you in here, actually?
I'm right.
Oh.
Well, first of all, thank you for your attention and your insights this morning. I did take away several things. Miss Bell, I love the idea about the referral, and something we'll look into. We do have a list of companies that students in recent terms have received tuition reimbursement. It's a lengthy list, several hundred, and ranges from Jable Circuit, who employs hundreds of employees, to a lot of mom and pop, smaller businesses. So, we'll call through that, we'll work with Andrea's team, because I know they're in those businesses a lot. Mr. Stonecifer, I like your idea as far as selling the idea of tuition reimbursement to those organizations that don't have to be around. Continue to work with Andrea and her team on workforce plans and collaboration, bringing more events to campuses. Miss Cole, I love that idea. That's always a, that's always a win. And we talk about campus tours, it's so much easier to sell a student when they're on campus than when they don't take a campus tour. So, I've got some marching orders and some great ideas, so thank you very much.
Thank you. And let's ask Dr. Cooper, if you would kind of highlight some of our takeaways for the retention action planning group, we'll bring that up here in a moment. I think the retention plan, there we go.
Well, first of all, thank you to the board for their belief in our academic pathways. We truly think that this is one of the reasons, not the only reason, but one of the reasons that we're seeing the increase in retention and the decrease in withdrawal rates. One of the things that we would like to do as we continue to offer tutoring is that, and I haven't even had this conversation with our learning resource individuals, but I think there's an opportunity here to even improve further by creating learning communities within learning resources that students within different degree programs or from different diverse populations can join, that will be another way of engaging them and keeping them on their path as they move forward. And we will continue, of course, to improve our student engagement, to keep them on their path, because we know that when students are engaged, not only in the classroom but outside the classroom, they're more likely to stay with us, to feel that somebody cares, they've built relationships, and that's very important to their success. So, thank you again.
And now, let's move to our learning experience team. Dr. Ulrich, if you could share some of the key takeaways for your team?
So, the key takeaway is really, number one, kind of epitomizes what we really need to focus on and what we're really, really sorely lacking, is trying to improve that gap, that achievement gap. So, that's where we're going to be really focusing on the next year. Also going to continue with some of the things that we've outlined with the engaging syllabus, looking at offering those incentives, I like that idea, revisiting that conversation with the committee and talking about how we can incentivize our faculty, and definitely working on ways to spotlight those faculties that are really going above and beyond and achieving all the challenges that we put forward, you know?
Thank you.
Before you leave, this has just been bugging me the whole time since you left. Can we offer Gateway Math and English to the high school seniors? Then this high school senior set?
Yes, high school.
Is it Gateway?
Intermated Algebra, College Algebra, Statistics in the spring.
Does the Spanish County School System encourage that? Do we encourage that?
We encourage it, certainly, but we have the AP program that's also being offered in high schools. But it's up to the students, so I don't think the school system promotes the dual enrollment as much, but we definitely promote that.
And it's the pathway course?
It's the gateway pathway course.
Do we teach it, or does a high school?
Many of the faculty are adjuncts to our college.
They've been credentialed to teach at the college.
What high schools is that offered in?
Up and down the county, goes from liberal high schools, all the way to the higher schools. Probably about deans up there, or is it about a dozen, 14 schools?
I can understand why they don't want to take it when they get to college. Why wouldn't the student take it while they're a high school senior?
Because, Mr. Foster, it is every Florida high school student's God-given right not to do a lick of work in their senior year. And we have to change that. We have to lift, I mean, we have to lift them up. They plan their schedule, so they've got nothing left to do.
You're right.
We actually have had several conversations, because if we take a look at the lowest success rate course, it's going to be MATE 1033, sorry. So, we talked about perhaps having a math boot camp prior to the semester beginning and trying to incentivize the students to come by maybe offering different codes. Had a little bit of issue trying to get money for that. We talked about maybe having some of these courses offered 12 weeks is actually the course, but start at 16 weeks, so that the first four weeks, you're actually drilling into some of the information so that when they actually start the course, they're a little bit better prepared. So, those have been conversations that we're having, so we are looking at some of those lowest success rate courses, trying to target what we can do. And that's why we want to get involved with the students too, and have them kind of tell us, what do you think would be helpful to you?
I was throwing that at the last educational ecosystem meeting out this summer campus. We brought up this idea of taking math earlier on, and really, as soon as they're done with their high school math, don't even wait a second, your next semester, try to take the dual enrollment class. That way, they're getting it over with and done with while stuff is still fresh on their minds. And it's going to come back around in the spring when they have their collaborative labs, where we have all of the different levels of middle school, high school teachers meeting with one another, as well as our faculty members, to talk about that pathway and how quickly the students are going to. I think we're all on the same page, and a lot of it has to do with changing mindset about why it's important to take some of these dual enrollment classes early as opposed to, you know, your AP and all the rest of it.
We have to change the mindset of our students in general, too, especially in these particular groups. We did a Women to STEM event a few months ago, and I was talking to an African-American male, or female student, and she told me that she had started college and then she stopped because math scared her, and she was getting ready to take her math class. So, she paused in life, and many years went by, and now she's coming back a little bit older. So, just changing that perception might help as well.
Oh, you guys, yeah.
Close us all.
Thank you, appreciate that. Let's, let's hear from our employee engagement team, and we'll bring up some of the recap.
Well, our list is short. Yeah, right at the very beginning, we're focused, which ones? Once we gain that information, we will certainly have a more robust action plan, and we'll need to develop what steps we will take. We are, I'm assuming, we will look at the low hanging fruit and try to identify them and take action on those. First, because we can accomplish some of those things easily, and then dive into some of the more complicated things that the employees are asking basically for movement on.
Thanks, Daryl. And finally, our resource alignment team, some key takeaways.
Okay, number one, we want to make sure that in addition to focusing on our particular fiscal year ask, we extend those asks over multiple years to make sure we can cover expenses going forward. Also look to shift resources to address workforce needs and meet what industry is telling us they need. Number two, look at restricted versus unrestricted dollars, engaging the foundation to not only raise money for scholarships, but also to raise dollars to help with operations. We believe that hiring a new vice president to oversee the foundation, institutional advancement overall, will bring, will bring much progress to this area. Number three, look at bringing on new baccalaureate degrees, again, to meet what industry is asking for and to make sure that we stay relevant in the eyes of our students. Number four, to communicate with legislators on what programs we offer and to continue to build those relationships so that we have many, many advocates statewide for our institution. And five, continue to focus on realignment of resources, looking at our footprint, making reductions in the size of space we need to improve or perform, continue to streamline our business model to make sure that we are in efficient operation moving forward in higher education.
Where do alumni dollars go for the Alumni Association?
For the Alumni Association, it goes into, they have their own program fund, and that's where the dollars go. The board, the Alumni Association Board, they govern those dollars, what we can spend on.
They've been basically doing scholarships?
Yes, it's been in scholarships and awards at the end of the year.
I just wonder, you know, considering the amount of alumni that are actually members of the Alumni Association, I wonder if, if there's a way to increase the fees or the membership amount slightly, but communicate specifically where those dollars are going to give people more of a reason to be part of the Alumni Association. I don't know, seems like there's a lot of opportunity there.
I think you guys really...
Sorry. We've asked them to increase for the last three years, to increase the amount to at least, right now it's $15, to at least $25, so that we can have some money for things that we, that we need. However, they haven't done, they have voted against it time and time again. So, we just started this year having a alumni community fund, which would be unrestricted dollars, and we can use it for whatever needs we want, for what's needed.
We're working on the alumni board and helping them understand the college. I think that they've not been as connected to the institution, and putting together processes so that new alumni are on the board, so that folks can understand that, and then we will be able to get more of those things moving forward.
We just grew it from like 250 to like 900, right?
Right, but they haven't been coming, but they haven't been coming to board meetings, to the board.
Baby steps.
We got to take the steps, we just, yeah.
Thank you, 700 people, now we're increasing your fees, you know, I mean, that would be...
We got to take these steps.
But if you can paint the picture of where some of this is going?
Yeah.
You're more than that.
Well, back to the Hall of Famers thing that we talk about all the time, if we could get those people writing $1,000 checks.
Correct, yeah. Any other comments from the board before we move on?
So, we have our roadmap for success, and thank you, board members, for your input in helping position us for a great 2019. Before we move into the final evaluation segment, I wanted to just ask Jonathan, who's been capturing this in real time, if he can share some of the key pieces of the visual here.
Okay. You know, I started in the middle here, just looking and thinking about the vision, the core values, the mission, and just sort of letting that be the guide for this whole visual, as it radiates through the different buckets of our recruitment, retention, learning experience, employee experience, and our resource alignment. And just letting that highlight different keywords and nuggets to each bucket, and just trying to visualize how each flows into the other, the connection between recruitment and retention, learning experience and employee experience, and also resource alignment. There's a lot of text here more than we're used to capturing, but we want to make sure we captured all of those labels. In blue, you'll see the accomplishments, and in the red, you'll see the action.
All right, well, onward and upward, team. You certainly are welcome to continue on with us if you would like to observe the discussion on the evaluation for our president and our board members, but also you're blessed and released if you wish.
And I just want to say quickly before anyone leaves, thank you all for your hard work on this. It becomes more and more evident how all of these things connect, and I hope that everyone understands that the overall success of the college is going to, to be successful, we're going to have to be successful in all these areas. We can't just be good at two out of the five. We have to be great at all five of these areas. And the sense I got from sitting here today, and I don't know how the other trustees felt, is that you all actually enjoy working with each other. There seemed to be some great camaraderie between the teammates, and, you know, it looks like you guys are happy and having some fun doing this as well. I know it's a lot of work, I know it's difficult, but this is the exact direction we need to go in to continue to improve and to stay the best college in the state of Florida. So, thank you for that. And I would just add, if we can move forward with maybe each month at a different board of trustees meeting, getting an update from one of these groups, and then we can take a month off and then start the cycle again, so it's kind of every six months, we're getting an update as to where the different teams are. And then it's ongoing, and it stays fresh in our minds, because we get inundated with a lot of information, and this would just be helpful to stay on top of it, so.
Excellent. Appreciate you.
Just finalizing.